So we'll be looking to be very strategic around the use of these funds. And this is the information that we have now, we'll come back to you. As we gather more information and understand, like I said, we're supposed to get supposedly our first half in the next couple of months and waiting to see how that will come through the state. We assume it'll be through DOLA, just like the CARES Act money was, but we're still awaiting that process. And then just if the mayor or Megan Davis have anything to add, that's really just the highlights and we'll continue to keep you updated and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Balser. We'll take it over to public comments on this agenda item. If any members of the public would care to comment on this agenda item this evening, this is your opportunity to do so. Seeing none, that takes us back over to council questions and comments and we'll start off with Mayor Protam Maloney. You're muted. I almost never get to say that to you.
You know what, I did it the opposite way. So thank you for catching me early on because I will forget what I'm saying. I want to thank the City Manager Balser for the report. It's a really good staff report. It's interesting, one of the questions I had was the general uses and one of them was about transportation, which you mentioned, which is really great. But I have a minor question on the third bullet, strategic investments and economic assistance for businesses experiencing COVID-19 closures. So I presume that that would mean that direct grants or so forth to businesses would be covered or could be, that would be one of the uses. What about our, the impacts to the city? For example, you know, last week we made a decision to close downtown for, you know, temporarily this year. Close the street. Can we cover some of those costs with this money?
Yeah, I think there's a good possibility we could because those could be, you know, yeah, assistance to businesses, direct grants, as you stated. And it actually, it's a good reminder too, I wanted to mention that we are also talking with the county and the other municipalities to talk about if there's a way to potentially do, that we could all participate in a program so that it's consistent around assistance to businesses. If there's some opportunities to do that countywide, so we're also, and just uses as well, because the county gets a big tranche of money as well as how they might assist and we can coordinate with each other on funds as well. So that's another piece that we're also working on.
All right. Thank you for the additional information and clarification. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I don't see any other hands at this time. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just curious, without having to look it up, what our lost revenue is? And how close to the 4.47 million? Because that does seem like the easiest way to claim that and use it however you want. So do we have an estimate of what our lost revenue is?
Well, no, because we're not clear about how we, how they want us to calculate that yet. So that's one of the things that we're waiting on. So is it pre-pandemic? Does that mean 2019? Does that mean January of 2020? You know, so I think that those are some of the questions we're waiting to answer. But we agree that that could be the simplest way and the most flexible to address the revenue loss. And then it goes in the general fund and you all can decide how you want to spend it. So, yep, absolutely.
Thank you. So I'll just add in my comments at this point. I really appreciate the staff report. And of course, you know, we all want more information at this time and the Treasury hasn't given it to us. So we'll just have to wait that guidance. But I think looking at, you know, covering our lost revenue is a great approach that the staff has laid out for us. And we can do that and then work as a group to evaluate how to make any expenditures through our normal budget process to ensure that it goes through the rigor of the budget and that we fund our highest priority needs first. And then if, you know, beyond lost revenue, if there's an opportunity to reimburse ourselves for expenditures during the pandemic, we've expended a lot of funds through direct business assistance, through overtime for policing, water, for all of those things. So if we can cover some of our expenditures from the last year as well, I think that would be great. And the staff have really laid it out excellent for us. And I thank City Manager Balser for all her hard work through the pandemic. I'll go to Councilmember Fahey, just since she hasn't had a chance yet, and then back to Mayor Protam Maloney. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just have a question on procedure, I guess, or qualification. I'm not sure how to put it. In the, in the recommendation, recommended uses, it says it should be applied primarily to non-recurring expenditures. So how could that be used for pay for employees? Because wouldn't that be an ongoing expense?
Would it just be a bonus or how would that work?
So again, we're writing specific guidance, but one of the specific things it does say in the current bill is premium pay. We're not really sure what that means. So waiting for further guidance.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry for the delay. Councilor Dickinson, I think you have a really good question. One of the things that we'll be discussing at the Finance Committee meeting next Monday is the final 2020 statements of fund revenue expenditure and changes to fund balance. So that'll be, that'll be providing some information. Of course, it'll come down to what's the definition of how you can apply that. But that'll be really good information to sort of address your question, I think, or at least some data to understand that. So. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you, everybody. We will stay tuned and look forward to seeing how this plays out. City Manager Balser, did you want to add anything else to end the conversation?
No, thank you.
All right. Thank you all very much. That takes us to our second agenda item this evening. And final agenda item, the discussion direction on the 2021 potential ballot measure for transportation master plan implementation. Turn it over to Megan Davis for our presentation, our deputy city manager.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Just bear with me for a minute while I share my screen and get the presentation going for this evening. How does that look?
It's not, that looks great. Thank you. Okay, great. All right.
Okay, so I'm going to be presenting this evening, but I think as I mentioned the last time that we discussed this, we have had kind of a team of staff who have been working on this issue. And so tonight we have, of course, City Manager Balser with us, Director Kevin Watson, Director of Finance Kevin Watson, Public Works Director Kurt Cower and Rob Zuccaro, Planning and Building Director have also been deeply involved in these discussions. So let's just get started. So this is our second conversation this year regarding the possibility of a transportation ballot measure to support the implementation of some of the transportation amenities that were identified through the transportation master planning process. At our previous meeting on March 9th, we spent some time going through the transportation master plan goals and kind of walking through how some of these projects were identified through that process. And a little bit more about, you know, how we might put them together into sort of packages, so to speak, if council was interested in pursuing additional funding. So tonight, staff is bringing back some additional information based on the questions and directions that you all provided last month on March 9th. So we'll talk a little bit about some potential projects and packages, some of the funding options, a little bit more detail on the funding options that you were interested in, specifically bonding on existing tax revenue and new property tax. And then we've got some key questions for discussion. So just a quick overview of how we kind of combine the projects. Again, based on your recommendation, we are proposing two packages. And of course, these, you know, aren't set in stone. Things could be, you know, moved around, but the first package includes basically South Boulder Road, I'm sorry, Colorado State Highway 42 and South Boulder Road Underpass, Colorado State Highway 42 and Short Street Underpass, and Colorado 42 corridor improvements. And that would really be sort of match funding for any state or federal funding that we might get for some overall corridor improvements. So this package is specifically focused on State Highway 42 with projects that would be combined to total approximately $20 million worth of transportation investments. And we do have more specifics about these projects in the packet around kind of where we are with design, what the rough estimates for costs would be. Because as we've said in the past, we haven't done design for a lot of these projects. So we don't necessarily have real refined cost estimates for these, but we've got a little bit more detail there. And I'm going to just real quickly take a moment to allow Director Cower to talk a little bit about the current status of the State Highway 42 corridor improvements. Because I know we've gotten some questions from, and some interest from residents around this issue prior to the meeting. Kurt, do you want to give us a little bit of an update?
Director Cor, you're not coming through on my speakers. Can other folks hear him right now?
Okay, sorry, I was muted. I was, thank you. So we are in partnership with Lafayette and Boulder County and CDOT. We're currently starting the beginnings of the corridor study. And so we've done some scoping amongst all those partners and discussed everyone's goals for the project and kind of what the project boundaries will be. And we'll soon be moving into a phase where we'll be doing an updated survey along the entire corridor. So this just takes into account elevation and environmental factors and utility conflicts and all the various things that we need to understand to both design it and qualify for any possible federal funding in the future post-corridor study. So that's kind of where we're at right now. And the elements that we've talked about are what Director Davis has discussed. And we're looking at that from baseline road all the way down to Lock Road.
And then just Director Cor, if you could elaborate on the multi-use trail a little bit?
Yep. So on the east side of Highway 42, we are reviewing a off-road multi-use trail from Etta Minimum Pine to South Boulder Road. And then once you get to South Boulder Road and cross over through existing sidewalks and then the underpass project that was just recently completed, there is a trail that goes north and then crosses over to the west of the road at the underpass. And then there's further trail that needs completed as you go north from this study.
Thanks. Director Davis?
Thank you. Thanks so much, Director Cower, for the update. And so that's kind of what's included in Package 1, which is sort of the smaller of the two packages. The second package includes basically a package of pedestrian underpasses throughout the city. Again, these all were identified through the transportation master planning process as kind of multimodal connections where pedestrian underpasses would improve the user experience and make some connections that people within the community were interested in. So we have, again, the two State Highway 42, South and South Boulder Road Pedestrian Underpass and the State Highway 42 and Short Underpass. We also have South Boulder Road Pedestrian Underpass at Via Appia and the underpass at Bullhead and Gulch and under BNSF. And then South Boulder Road and Main Street. So that is the larger of the two packages. And that estimate is roughly about $40 million to complete that package. So we're going to look, continue to look at some further kind of analysis around these two packages as we move forward. So what those costs don't include or would need to be sort of built into those costs in addition would be operational costs. And the operational costs that we have estimated here are for staffing. Really to complete those projects, it's a pretty significant increase in the number and size of capital projects that were currently equipped to complete at this time. And so we would need some staffing assistance, particularly in transportation engineering, as well as some kind of project management assistance to help us complete those projects in a timely fashion. So our estimate is about 1.4 million, which includes about 250,000 per year plus annual staffing increases for two staff. And then we do have estimated maintenance costs, depending on how many underpasses are constructed. We anticipate it would be between $10,000 and $25,000 per year. And that would be for things like snow removal, if there is any vegetation, you know, medians, plantings, that type of thing would be included in there and then maintenance repairs. The other thing to keep in mind as we think about operational costs is, you know, anytime we expand projects like this, it does have an impact on some of the other, I would say, more administrative services within the organization, in particular finance, the finance department. You know, of course, the HR department, IT department for some of those support, administrative support services. So those are things to keep in mind too, which would of course then need to be discussed during operational budget times as well. So previously, we looked at kind of a range of funding options that might be considered. We have these non-city sources and these include things like statewide transportation funding, federal and state tip funding, federal infrastructure funding, which we're anticipating to see in the coming months, potential county-wide transportation ballot measure and other grant funding. These, I would say, you know, we still would be, no matter how council decides to proceed, we still would be actively pursuing these types of opportunities as they emerge. And certainly if, you know, we were to go forward with a ballot measure, we would want to try to capture as much additional funding through these sources as we possibly can. And it would expand our ability to complete projects and potentially even be able to complete additional projects or complete projects more quickly or other components of projects or things like that. Of the city-generated sources that we talked about, the two that council requested we move forward and explore more deeply are the existing tax revenues. So that's bonding on existing tax revenue and property tax. So just to look a little bit more closely at the bonding on existing revenue, we went through a few scenarios for generating revenues here to support the project packages. The bonding on existing revenues concept is to take a portion of the city's capital projects fund, which is funded through 1% of the city's sales and use tax, and then bond on those funds to have the funding upfront so that we can complete the projects more quickly. And then we would dedicate a portion of those revenues to bond repayments over time. So the scenario that we modeled here is for a $20 million, 20-year bond. And this would require approximately 1.3 million each year for repayment. So to understand how these repayments would fit into the existing CIP plan and the prior commitments that have been made to capital projects, we looked at the six-year CIP plan, which was included in the 2021-2022 biennial budget and tried to look specifically at transportation projects that could either be removed or not completed or, you know, moved out or something like that so that that funding could be captured. So just a couple of the ideas that are presented here on the slide. You could look at the transportation master plan implementation funding. We only had one year of transportation master plan implementation funding that we included in the budget. And that was for an assortment of projects which included Via Appia improvements, bike routes, pedestrian crossings, US 36 bikeway connections around McCaslin, fun routes, trails and safe routes to school connections. So those were the planned projects to be completed with that funding. You could not move forward with those projects and capture that funding for repayment. That would of course only be free up funding in 2022. You could look at things like reducing the paving budget in 2022 and in future years if you wanted to free up some funds for the bond repayments moving forward. Whoops, sorry about that. You could remove or reduce other non-transportation projects. Of course, there are a whole range of projects that are included in the CIP across the organization. You know, those projects include everything from, you know, IT projects, projects for the PD, you know, facilities projects. We have a lot of sustainability-focused projects that are currently included in the CIP. And you could look at reducing or removing those projects to free up those dollars or utilizing some capital projects fund and general fund reserves. So those are some options that we explored. There may of course be, be more, but just some that we thought you might want to consider. So the other revenue generation kind of mechanism that we looked at was property tax. And so here you can see that we looked at a potential additional mill levy, one additional mill, two additional mills or four additional mills. And you can see what the estimated additional revenue would be. As you can see, when we were talking about the 20-year bond, the 20 million, 20-year bond, we were talking about about 1.3 million per year. So that's sort of kind of in the ballpark here of the two mill levy, a little bit less than that. And we did provide the estimated annual impact on the single-family residence, as well as you can see the estimated annual impact on commercial properties. So in terms of options for the ballot measures, we, it kind of comes down to a few choices here. And again, these are not necessarily the full range of possibilities. But for the Package 1, which was the $20 million project package, you could bond on 1.3 million per year of existing city tax revenues. And again, that would require a little bit more input from council around how you want to make adjustments within the CIP plan in order to address that need. You could ask voters to approve an approximate 1.875 mils property tax increase, which again would generate about that $20 million. The $40 million project package, you could bond on 1.3 million per year again of the existing city tax revenues and ask voters to approve that 1.875 mils property tax. That's sort of what we were referring to as kind of a hybrid approach. We talked about that at the last meeting or the last discussion around this. Or you could also ask voters to approve a larger property tax increase at say 3.75 mils to generate the $40 million. So we did have some initial conversation with our, the city's financial advisor and our bond council to get a little bit of detail of what kind of questions. Depending on what package and what type of revenue we're hoping to generate, a debt question regarding bonding against future sales tax without increasing sales taxes for $20 million could be, could be posed. And then a debt question regarding bonding and to raise property taxes to complete $20 million for Package 1 could be, or you could go up to, you know, 40 million, a larger property tax increase to complete Package 2. Or to complete Package 2, you could have one taper question for bonding to utilize existing sales tax as needed and a limited property tax to complete Package 2. We would probably want to request a higher number on the property tax side so that you had some flexibility regarding the sales tax and property tax receipts. If there was, you know, fluctuations or variability there, you would be able to have that combined level of funding that was desired. And one question would reduce the risk of having that problem where one question could pass and a second ballot question couldn't if you wanted that $40 million package. Those are a few options. And then just a few other considerations, maintenance and staffing costs. They cannot be a part of the debt question. So I highlighted what some of those costs might be. So that would require either a separate ballot question or a separate funding source. And the council communication incorporates some concerns that staff has regarding the impact of bonding on existing capital projects fund revenue, really in terms of the city's ability to compete the non-transportation-related capital projects, which as I think you all know, because I think everyone's been through the budgeting process, it's always, it's always a challenge. We have more capital projects than we can typically fund. And it also could reduce the flexibility to address emerging capital needs, particularly over a 20-year period. So there's additional work required with the city's financial advisors and bond council on any preferred bonding scenario. What, you know, what type of bonds we're talking about, limited tax general obligation bonds or non-limited tax general obligation bonds? The taper amounts and values for the first years and how that would be kind of calculated or calibrated? The broad ballot language, which would allow flexibility because some of these projects are not well fleshed out at this point. And therefore, something like a resolution of intent, which would outline the projects to be funded through the ballot measures, without having that specific detail around the exact cost could be utilized as well. So with that, we, I guess I could, I'll turn it over to City Manager Balser if she has anything to add. And otherwise, we have some questions for council. If council's interested in moving forward, you know, what kind of amount? Is there a specific package number that you prefer? What revenue source or sources are, do you prefer? And which projects would you like see completed? And then do you have a ballot question preference around the language?
Thank you, City Manager Balser. Did you want to add anything?
No, that was great. Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you. That will take us to the public comment period on this agenda item this evening. So if any members of the public would care to comment tonight on this agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. And remember that you can dial the number that you see at the bottom of Channel 8 or you can call in and then dial star nine. You can also click the raise hand feature at the bottom of the screen if you've just clicked the link through the Zoom interface. Seeing none, that takes us back over to council discussion. And if it's okay, Deputy City Manager, if you just take away the slides just so we can see each other's faces for now, and then if we need them again later, we can pull them back up. Any council members care to start the discussion? Mayor Protam Maloney?
I'm just going to start with a few questions for clarification. So Deputy Manager, just a few questions for you. So I'll notice in, in Package Number 2, that on the packet that we're looking at, the Dillon Road Underpass was crossed off. Could you explain what the thinking was behind that?
Yes. Yeah, thank you for raising that, Mayor Protam Maloney. So we, we, it was requested that we come up with sort of a $20 million and $40 million package. So we tried to create a list of projects that fit within that, you know, kind of realm. So the reason we actually left it in the memo and showed the strike through is that if you all want to have discussion and if you have a preference between the, you know, underpasses and amenities that were included in the package and would like to add that in and take one out, it would, you know, require kind of some jockeying among those projects. So that's, I think, up for discussion.
Okay, so it sounds like it was taken out because of a math decision.
Yeah, I would say it was a math decision and.
Okay, so it wasn't meant as a priority decision. Is that a correct statement?
You know, I think it depends how you look at the, how you look at the priorities. I mean, I think we certainly have had discussions with city council about making those connections without doing an underpass and how we might make investments in that area without doing an underpass. So I think there are alternatives in that location, but that can be said of other locations, you know, as well. So.
Well, I guess at some point I'd like somebody to address that because I look at that particular underpass as being a connection between the US 36 bikeway to the power line trail that connects pretty much to all the other trails, you know, including going downtown and in the Coal Creek Trail and everything else. So I'd like somebody to address that at some point in time. But let me go through the rest of the questions. When we're talking about the payment of the debt, was the bond financing cost included in that?
I'm going to, I'm going to let our Finance Director Kevin Watson provide specifics about the bond questions. If you're, if you're Director Watson, if you're willing to do that.
Sure. We weren't that precise when we came up with those numbers. However, we did estimate high. We originally came up with 1.2 million in annual debt service roughly. And so we estimated at 1.3 for the analysis. So, you know, there's some, there's some leeway in there, but we didn't specifically calculate what we thought the cost of issuance would be.
So help me with the math here. Is that about a 10% premium?
Yeah, a little less than that.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you. The next question I have is about, you know, when there was a slide about additional city funding sources. So I guess the question I have is what about the LRC is funding? Because a lot of this is in the renewable, the renewal area. And then as we look at Bullhead Gulch, you know, there was Metro District funding for that at some point in time. So if you could address those two questions, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'll start. Yeah, so I'll start with the LRC piece and you'll notice we did put that in the fiscal impact section just mentioned it because we do have some of the downtown projects, particularly the connection on Short Street, State Highway 42 and Short Street that the LRC has discussed. And so I think that is a possibility. That there could be LRC funding to support those projects. Director Pierce, I don't know if you have any other comments you want to add about that. I see you're on the call as well.
Sure. So the, the LRC has included those two underpass projects and several other TMP items in their work plan. But I wouldn't consider those commitments. I consider them, you know, ideas that are sort of under consideration as LRC, you know, receives opportunities. So they did budget a couple sidewalk TMP projects in their 2021 budget, but the underpasses have sort of been listed as as low long-term priorities. Certainly we'll give LRC an update on council's discussion. They're going to be reviewing their work plan in in more depth at their meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. That takes us to council member Lay and I'll just, oh, you're still going. Sorry.
I haven't asked the two-part question, so I'm looking for a second. That's okay.
Can you repeat the second part, Dennis, please?
Yes, when we were talking about the Bullhead Gulch. The Metro District, and I can't tell you the name of the Metro District up there, had pledged money towards that project, although at the time when we looked at the cost, it was much more than we had anticipated. Is there still the possibility that the Metro District will be contributing to the cost of this project?
You know, I can't answer that question. Heather, can you give a status update on that?
Sure, I believe it was $250,000. So it was a very small amount. So it's not, I wouldn't say it's not substantial, but I'm not sure it's relevant to the overall conversation of the cost of the underpass. So we did come to council a while back to talk about how we might use that funding in another way. Since we weren't moving forward at that point with, with the underpass. So it's potentially still there. Kurt, you can weigh in. But again, it's a small amount relative to the, the cost.
Thank you very much. I was hoping there's another zero at the end of that. Thank you, mayor. Here's my questions.
Thank you. And council member Lay is up and I'll just apologize that my cat has joined the meeting.
As long as it's not taking the place of your face.
That was a brief moment in the meeting where the cat was taking over. So sorry about that.
Yeah, I will pledge as a lawyer that I will not have a cat. Anyway, that was a funny thing that happened in another video that went wild. But what I, I have a couple of questions. One question for director Watson. Which is remind me of how big an increase we had in assessed valuation this last round.
Okay, just give me just a second and I'll look that up.
The second question while he's doing that is a question for probably for the deputy city manager, although I will let anybody can answer it, answer it. In a couple of different places in the staff report, certainly there's reference to how long it might take to to build or bring to fruition any of these projects. And in one place it says five years, another five to seven. I'd be interested just in a little more background around that. And, you know, because one of the things we're certainly considering in all of this is the increases over time in the cost of these projects. You know, which are the ones that are more likely to take a little longer. I I have some sense of that from communication with, with director Cor, but I want to, you know, find out a little bit more about the background for that. So those are my two questions.
I can start on the second question and then Kurt might want to chime in too, but I'll just say that you know, you may have noticed that we, we suggested even, you know, if the tax started in 2022, whether or not, you know, we were receiving revenues at that point, we would want to start design work, you know, pretty immediately because the design work would take, you know, likely a year and then we wouldn't be able to break ground until that was complete. So I think that's why we were looking at a five to seven-year time horizon. And of course, it depends on the number of projects. So if you're talking about two underpasses or six underpasses. You know, that's obviously going to make a difference in how long the number of projects takes as well. Kurt, do you want to add some more information to that?
Yeah, I can. It's, it's all how you attack it. I think the simple projects take two to three years or simple underpasses like Highway 42. The really hard ones can take anywhere from three to five years, like South Street Underpass. I think the McCaslin at Davidson Mesa took about two to three years. So if you wanted to run them all parallel and you had one project manager running three or three projects per project manager and two project managers, then you're in the three to five-year range to get that sprint done. If you had one project manager and you stacked them all on that project manager, then you obviously have to spread things out. So that's how you want to attack it.
Thank you.
I can answer the first question.
Thanks, director Watson.
Okay, the 2020 net assessed valuation, and that is the evaluation that the collections that represent the collections for 2021. That increased by 4.7% over 2019. Just to give you 2019 increased by 4.5% over 2018. And then we're projecting an average in our long-term financial plan of about 3% per year. As you'll remember, there are reassessment years and non-reassessment years. So those adjustment fluctuate, but I hope that answers your question.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Great question so far. Any other questions or discussion points, comments? If there are no other questions, we want to talk about, you know, desire to move forward on an amount in a package, I guess. I'll weigh in. I just think that the community really values these types of transportation projects. The Davidson Mesa underpass, you know, had some criticism going into it about the cost and would this be utilized? But now that it's built and in, people are very happy with it. In word three, we have five underpasses. I looked on the map today and that doesn't include any of them on McCaslin with the Bus Rapid Transit. So there's more if you include those over there. But they are very heavily utilized by kids going to the middle school up at Monarch K through eight and by families taking the Coal Creek Trail and in other parts of town. When I was campaigning, I certainly heard from North End Steel Ranch, people up behind Alfalfa's that there are some real connectivity issues for their families to get across those big highways. South Boulder Road and 42. And that, you know, while they can push the push button and cross, that's not the issue. Like we have very smart residents. Of course, they can do that. But it would just be a lot nicer of an experience if there were underpasses like there are in the rest of town. So I'm hopeful that we can have a good discussion tonight about how to facilitate the building of this infrastructure that the community has asked for over time rather than saying yes or no. I hope that's where the conversation goes. How do we tackle this and figure out how to deliver for the community what they've been asking for? And I think it's great that we've identified some additional information that we need like to better understand how many staff resources we need because we want to be sure to give the staff the resources they need to get it done, right? We don't want to just fund the project and then not give the staff the appropriate staffing level, both in direct resources and indirect resources that are needed for the project. So I'm glad we've identified some of these things. And hope we can continue to flesh out where we have more information that's needed and how we could tackle these types of projects going forward so we can deliver for the community. Council member Lay.
Yeah, I just have one additional quick question that you just reminded me of, which is from a staff standpoint, I mean, these are, I certainly read plenty about how staff intensive the work that would be, would be required, you know, for for either one of these packages, certainly, especially for the second. And, you know, we do have a way of, of operating pretty lean staff generally. And that, you know, I certainly don't want to discourage that, but I also really want to press the city manager about whether those FTEs are, you know, whether whether they're low. The, the request for additional staffing, not request, but the estimate for staffing, it really is, is likely to be adequate for the, you know, either of these projects. Or either of these packages, excuse me.
City manager Balter.
You know, so I would say right now it's our best guess. So I, I mean, I do think that there are, you know, there's a lot of staff work that's not related to the actual construction and design. So communications around all of this, the work with the bond council, the work, you know, the next few months will be crazy trying to you know, along with the other priorities, trying to put these bond packages together. I, you know, I'm not sure that's any different than whenever that happens. So, and there's, you know, there's only so much certainty. You know, there, so, you know, I, like, as I said, I think it's our best guess right now. I think there will, there could be additional resources required as we go. And those things are included in the, in the bond package, those costs. So, you know, we have to anticipate that that will be part of our budget and that you know, as we go, we'll, we'll continue to assess that. So that's my, my best guess right now.
Thank you. Council member Lipton.
Thank you. Let me start by saying that I am not necessarily adverse to a modest increase in taxes to support infrastructure projects for the community, ones that have broad benefit to the community. I'm, I am concerned about the process we're using to get to that decision. And I believe that there is a certain and perhaps large imprecision in the cost estimates that are being presented as part of the decisions, decision packages that you're trying to get feedback from tonight. I think this, to do this right, there should be probably a whole additional set of design and cost estimates that should be developed and then put into a package or packages that could then be considered for a bond and a tax increase. I think, you know, just I mean, I've been on city council for seven and a half years. I, I can't remember a major capital project that came in within budget. And it's not because of the best efforts of our staff trying to manage the uncertainty of design and construction after we get into it. I think the problem traditionally has been we haven't done enough design and cost estimating before these projects are brought to the council and money allocated. So we get into projects and then we have to feed the projects and there's all these, there are unanticipated costs and design challenges. And, and this is why we should be careful and be and invest in doing additional design and cost estimating before we actually perhaps go with a ballot issue. It's, I mean, if you just look at the numbers, everything's $8 million or $6 million. We, we know that's not the reality of it. And we, you know, to do this right, my preference would be we would spend the next year and use our, our resources, our existing resources to get into those kind of design and cost estimates. And then bring something to the ballot if we decide to move forward. So I, I don't disagree with the certainly with the intent of trying to fund transportation infrastructure, perhaps with a modest increase in taxes. But I mean, this, this is so this is running so quickly and with so little precision, it gives me great concern. Yeah, the other concern I have is matching the revenues, revenue streams with the expenses. So and just as an example, I don't know if, you know, we'd want to borrow, say, $20 million, whatever the number is. And then some of that money could not be expended for several years. Highway 42 is probably the best example where we would be waiting for some of our regional partners to be in the development of that corridor before we would probably put an underpass in. And, you know, so there is, you know, a timing. Why would we borrow the money today if something isn't going to be done in three, perhaps four years because other parties have to come to the table? And the same with other projects, if in fact it's going to take five or six years perhaps to digest all of this. Yeah, I guess this is a question for our financial advisor. Why borrow the full amount upfront? And why not do something more of a serial bond or something that matches the, the revenue flow with the expenses of the various projects? So anyway, I'm very curious to hear the rest of the conversation and what you guys were thinking about tonight. But I would prefer to slow this down a bit. I don't think it's ready.
Thanks, council member Lipton. And so just on Highway 42, I just want to add a little bit about that project. So Megan Davis, deputy city manager, and I have worked really hard to make sure that project's well positioned and CDOT. So it's on the 10-year plan and we're in year three of the 10-year plan. So CDOT is planning on funding their portion of it. And it's not in the super distant future. So we're, we're keeping an eye on that and trying to make sure that we stay the course to make sure that our components of it are ready when the time comes. So that's a good thing. And then I just want to remind everybody that three of the six underpasses that we have on our list have been designed. So I think it's just important to remember that we don't have no design work done. We have actually spent money to design three of these. And so if we could narrow in, like if council member Lipton, if you're comfortable moving forward with the three that we've designed, we're giving direction tonight to do some more design work. I just, if we could get a little bit more clarity in people's direction, because last year we had this conversation and the conversation last year was that we'll be ready next year. And then here we are next year. And so I think we need to have more discussion around how to hone in on what pieces of information we need and exactly what projects we wanted to narrow the focus down to. Maybe there are four underpasses we want to start working on. Maybe there are two, maybe there are five, maybe there are seven. But if we can just all try to get the scope as narrowed as we can so that the staff know what the next steps we need to start working on to make progress, that would be helpful.
Yes, if I may respond, I think that's an excellent question and, and perhaps, and it wasn't part of the presentation, staff could give us the background on the various projects and where they are in the design process and what the challenges might be for each of those in terms of it exceeding or even coming in under or within budget. So maybe that should be part of the conversation tonight.
Great. Director Cor, do you want to dig in on some of that now? And then we'll see where the conversation continues to go.
Yes, let's do that. Does it help to look at numbers while we talk about this? Or do you want me to just talk and you listen?
I think you should start by talking.
Okay. So we designed Bullhead Gulch. And I was just looking at the estimate on that and it was around four, three, 4.3 million in 2019. So another 5% on that for some escalation and it's around, maybe it gets close to 4.7 or 4.5 million. We did a lot of design on South Boulder Road in Maine in 2019. And that was at 8.7, there was some escalation and you're probably at 9.7. That did include 500,000 of right-of-way. And the right-of-way would be the riskiest part there. It's possible the right-of-way costs are more than 500,000 in that area. There was a very high-level estimate at South Boulder Road and via Appia, a very, very high-level guess by the consultant at 6 million. And so you knock that up 5% and it's around 6.6 million. And then if you start to kind of convey some of those numbers over to the other areas. We talked around South Boulder Road in Maine. So if you applied a similar number to that, maybe Highway 42 and South Boulder Road is in a similar range of eight to nine million. in a similar range of eight to nine million. You don't really know right of way there yet. And it's less constrained than Maine, so you might have less cost impacts there. So let's say it's around nine. Highway 42 and short, that should be pretty straightforward. It should mimic a lot of what we did up at the one, the one we just did. That one was $3 million. This one needs to be wider because of four lanes versus two. So let's double three million and get to six. So maybe that one's around 6.6 million. We don't understand right of way costs on Tebow side or our own, right, our own infrastructure there. So there's also some unknowns. And then Dylan and power line, we haven't really ever touched that as an underpass goes. So you could say it's probably in the 6 million range. I'm saying that based off a mix of Highway 42 estimates and then knowing that we did in McCaslin at Davidson Mesa for around three to four million. That's my guesses from looking at recent numbers, trying to do some escalators and recent experience.
Councilmember Lipton, you're muted.
Okay, so I, I think, I, I think what you're telling us, Kurt, is that there does need to be some more design and analysis. So I, maybe, maybe you can define for us what level of design and cost estimating you have been doing on the ones you have done some on. I mean, is it conceptual design? Have we got further into schematics or, you know, where are we?
Sure. Um, I think where we were hovering around was three had had some design. So I think it's the Bullhead Gulch is probably 90%. It's going to need a refresh because it's a little old, but 90% design. Main Street probably got to, we got pretty far into the details on that one. It's probably a good 30%. Via Appy is probably closer to 15%. And then I'm applying real world recent construction to all the other ones and some multipliers. So you could say it's zero to 15, zero to 15 on the other three. So you got two of fairly high confidence, the third one that's close and the others are, I guess.
So getting from even 30% to say 70%, what do you often find in terms of uncertainty and cost escalation?
You know, it could go up 10%ish. I think our ba, our biggest challenge that I've witnessed is the consultants think they do a really good idea, good at 30%. You get slight bumps to 75%. But then the market's been so dynamic that they're, what they're using has become old. So when you go to bid, it changes, it can change drastically. So I guess I have a different viewpoint. No amount of design has helped me so far deliver you guys a budget that's right because our market is so dynamic right now. That's the biggest challenge in this whole thing, I think.
So if we delay a year and you design them this year, construction inflation will have outpaced any benefit from having the further refinement on the design? Is that what you're saying?
It is. I think you have a risk either way. You could risk a five to 10 over million, five to 10 million dollar overrun with the packages you move forward with now, but those are costs you would have had regardless. You just didn't know you'd have them. Or you could wait, get more design. You'll have a million dollar risk per quarter percent of financing that goes up. And at a 5% construction cost escalator on a $40 million package, you have a $2 million per year increase per delay. So just if you go up a quarter percent on the interest rate and you wait one year, you've already spent 3 million waiting, so it's half an underpass. So by waiting a year, you spend half an underpass. So one to two years is a full underpass. So either way, you're risking the cost of one underpass, whether you move forward fast or whether you wait and get more information. And I just don't think, because it's so dynamic, I can't guarantee getting more information puts it at less risk. It's a very dynamic market.
We'll just put a pin in it here and councilmember Lipton, I'll come back. And I'm just wanting to get some more voices in on this point. So Mayor Proton Maloney?
I, I think that Caleb was next, actually, mayor.
Councilmember Dickinson? Sorry, I'm trying my best. Too many screens. Councilmember Dickinson?
No worries. Yeah, so I'm, I'm hearing a lot of good points. I think this is my, my first time talking, kind of going back to a couple of other thoughts as, as a Ward one council member, you know, I, I, walking Ward one, 2019, I was surprised to find out how important these underpasses and crossings were to residents, you know, and I asked them like, yeah, so what are some issues that you care about? It was a genuine question and I got genuine answers and it was the color of the trashcans. And, and underpasses were like the two main topics that people brought up and maybe, maybe airplanes literally third behind those two. And so I can, I can say that it's really important for people getting across South Boulder Road, getting across Highway 42. And there are a number of people, and I experienced it walking, that really felt like there were parts of our community that were cut off by these big roads and these, and these train tracks. And they, they were talking about those connectivity moments as really making them feel like they're more a part of Louisville than say Lafayette. And they really felt disconnected and I, and I know since we've got the underpass on the north side of South Boulder Road on 42, that there's been great enthusiasm for that and feeling, feeling a safe connection. And, you know, I think we're all members of our community, so I, you know, it's just, it's interesting to see like my daughter bike to her friend's house for the first time ever because the underpass exists. And they just weren't comfortable crossing that big road. So I know it's really important. And I do want to figure, I think, to the mayor's point earlier, for me, it's more of a how, not if. But I have said, you know, this is, they are really expensive and we can't just do them. So it's going to be a matter of figuring out the right resources or access to the resources. And I do feel like bonding is, is slightly better than taxing if we can, if we can pull it off. The total cost is a big issue. Anytime I talk about it, like, just that an underpass costs 6 million just blows my mind, right? Just from a, again, a resident perspective of like, oh my God, that's so expensive. And it was a lot less expensive five years ago. But for me, what that means is like, it's going to be a lot more expensive five years from now. And if we've gotten to a point in which they're too expensive to do today, then we're never, ever, ever, ever going to do these. They're not going to get any cheaper next year. So we're either going to do underpasses now or never. And I, I don't mean that to be dramatic, but, because I guess it's not true because we consider it five years ago and we're still considering it now. So, but it is just getting more expensive. So I think the earlier the better. And as far as the ability to borrow at 2%, if that's what I saw, is phenomenal from any sort of lending, you know, like that's, that's very cheap money. And so if that rate's going to go up and the cost is going to go up, the price is just going to go up and we're going to do fewer or, or just going to cost us more to do them. I'm very concerned about the bandwidth of our city staff. And so I am happy to see obviously put into the design, you know, FTEs to say, yes, we need project managers, we need engineers, we cannot possibly do this with our current staff. And I, I'm glad to see that those are in the budget because otherwise it's impossible. But I also still hear it's a lot of work just this year with bond council and with bringing this to voters and, and the work that we had to put in, maybe before we're able to hire people to do it. And so that, that concerns me. And yeah, and so to go off, I think Dennis, Jeff and Kurt, you know, just what, what, what I'm hearing is just historically, it's really hard to budget these because it takes so long. So if it takes three years, no good estimator, if you will, is going to say, oh, that'll cost 6 million, when it's only going to cost three, just because they're planning the process being so slow that by the time you're actually building it, it will have gone up by all that's really, I think, difficult to do a, a proper estimate and be believable. So if I told you right now that a $3 million underpass is going to cost you $10 million by the time you build it, that's just a crazy estimate. But that might be accurate. And so how do you do an appropriate or, or accurate estimate when timing is always going to be relatively slow? So I think those are just the, I just wanted to get my thoughts out on what I've heard so far and definitely emphasize since I, I did walk the streets, I guess, most recently in this room of Ward one. I know, Mayor, you were walking the whole city. But, um, but yeah, that was, it was a huge subject of conversation in Ward one around Main Street, sorry, South Boulder Road and 42 and, and access. So I think that's all I have for now, Mayor.
Thank you. And then Mayor Proton Maloney, because you put your hand down, the queue is now all out of order on my screen. So I have Brown, Layne, Maloney. Is that what you have? Mayor Proton Maloney? I just want to check in.
Thank you. I just didn't want to jump ahead of my colleague who had his hand up. So, you know, I, I guess I'm going to start off with, you know, the transportation master plan is something that got unanimous support by council. And I haven't heard anything tonight that suggests anything different. I, I think that what we're talking about is the process that we use moving ahead. I also believe, you know, I heard word, words like, this is the best guess, this is what it should be. And I, and I accept that, you know, given where we're at with some of these things. But I also think that from my perspective, if we were talking about doing estimates, we would start doing that almost immediately. And, and so it's not like these things are sequential. We would do this immediately and, you know, use the next several months. So if we wait until we do a bond and then do estimates, which is what we should do, then we wouldn't start until the beginning of the year. So to me, it's disingenuous to say that everything is sequential and these things line up based upon certain schedules. So anyway, that's, that's one perspective I have. But the one question I still have out there, the power line in package two was crossed off and the deputy mayor, excuse me, deputy city manager indicated that someone was going to be able to answer that question of why that was crossed off. And so that's the first question that I have.
Well, so I think, you know, I think, you know, we, we had to limit the package because you were asking for a certain size. So again, you, you can add that in and cross up another one if council would like to have that discussion, you know, that's really the...
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I, what I thought I heard was there were other, other solutions to that particular underpass. Yeah, I see that underpasses, you know, the power line trail is a super highway for, you know, people walking, biking, running and connecting that to the US 36 bikeway and Coal Creek Trail, which are two significant pathways. I thought I heard you say there were other ways of accomplishing that. And if there are, I guess I need to know that.
Yeah, so I think, I don't think, Kurt, Kurt, maybe you can talk, yeah. Kurt, do you have your hand raised for purpose? Do you want to talk about the at-grade crossing improvements that we have discussed?
Yeah, I had my hand raised for a different reason, but let's focus on that question that we just asked. I think there had a Hawk had been previously suggested at that location because it had a reasonable budget to it. And Hawks have worked in other areas with higher traffic volumes. So, but that doesn't mean an underpass is wrong. Council can prioritize any of these underpasses however they want.
Well, if we use that, if we use that logic, couldn't we solve all these with Hawk signals?
You could. And in some locations, there's already a signal where people cross that we're talking about an underpass. So I think it comes down to where transportation seems like it's going, focused on all ages and abilities. And I think the comment that someone made about my kid can now ride to their friend's house under the busy road without anybody worrying and that's safe, is the connection, type of connections you're talking about making for everybody around all pieces of the city. And that's what this package would accomplish. But how you prioritize those all, it could be done any way that you want.
Okay, well, all right. I, I guess we could argue about numbers and how much traffic there would be on this and so forth, but this would be a major connection. One of the things I've been asking for, the very day that we approved the transportation master plan was better connectivity from the US 36 bikeway into the city. And there's not any, not a really great way to do that today. Regarding the, the designs and Kurt, since you're, you still have your microphone open, that's great. So South Boulder Road in Maine, we had a extensive discussion at city council. We looked at different designs, different ideas. I, I guess I never saw a 30% design. What we have are some ideas. There was a number of challenges with, there was with, with access and right aways and so forth that would need to be resolved. That sounds like that's something that could be fairly complex. So when you say 30%, that, that's where I agree with Councilor Lipton. The design and the cost of these is something we're really not seeing. It's really hard for me to suggest we go borrow $40 million. These are nice round numbers. Will the cost go up? Yes, construction costs will go up. Will the interest rate go up? Could go up by half a percent over this period of time. But it's really hard to not support these because I, I support all of these. I think all of these are good ideas, but what is the process that we're using to do this? And if our estimates are off, then the general fund becomes the backstop. And that's what we've seen in a lot of these projects and some of them have been very, very significant. And so I, I agree with Councilor Lipton. I would like to see us do design and cost analysis at least up to the 30% on all these projects and identifying the issues. You know, right of way issues, we talk about how long Highway 42 for South Boulder Road. Now we're talking about Burger King, I believe, as being one of those places that we're going to have to negotiate with for right of way and access. And we have the South Boulder Road and Main Street on that, I guess it would be the southwest corner is a significant access and right of way as well that would have to be resolved. So I, I understand the interest in doing these soon. I, I don't think there's anybody who spoke against these, against these projects, but the process we use and the steps we take, I would like to see be more measured than just approving something today to go on the ballot. Thank you.
Your councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I, I am, I, I agree that, you know, these are, these are important projects to the community. And it is something, these are, you know, and, and being honest, right? These are amenities that we provide, you know, which make people feel safer as they're crossing, but also provide a, a level of connectivity between different areas. You know, I think the, the challenge, you know, the director Coors comments are well taken, which is, you know, there's uncertainty if we, if we move now, that's true. It seems like there's also uncertainty in the cost if we don't. And if, and we, we take more time. And so I am, I, I am willing to move forward because I think these are, these are important projects that, you know, without additional revenue, without additional sources of, of, without some creativity on our part, you know, may take decades to get done. So I'm, I'm, I think it's, I think it's time for us to, to, to think about, you know, it's, it's never going to be cheaper than it is right now. And so we, we should, should, you know, take advantage of low interest rates, take advantage of, you know, where things are and, and try to put together a package that's reasonable that we think, you know, voters will support and, and that prioritize the amenities that they really want at this point. So that's, I guess that's where I'm at on this.
Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I, I'm still asking questions. One, one question, which again is, is a matter of uncertainty, but I, I still think it's useful to know is, you know, when you guys talk about a dynamic environment, my gosh, yeah. We're about ready, it seems like, to launch into one of the biggest periods of infrastructure development that the country has had in... to launch into one of the biggest periods of infrastructure development that the country has had in many, many years. And I anticipate that's gonna be true in Colorado too, but I'm interested if anybody on the staff can, can speak to how that, you know, I, what, what effects do you foresee of that? I mean, you can tell me that I'm wrong. I don't, I probably not going to believe you, but, um, you know, I mean, I, the first thing that I think of is, is that costs might escalate for, not that the costs escalate, but that the, the cost estimates that we're preparing may well be, may well have to grow all the more if we wait very long. I, that, that isn't necessarily to say that we ought to go in one direction or not, but I'm interested in what you all see as the effects of, of that, of this giant, you know, eight hundred pound gorilla on our ability in Lewisville to command construction resources simply to, to get them to be supplied. We have run into this problem before where, where we have wanted to do stuff. We've got money, we've got everything appropriated, everything is ready to go, but we don't have anybody to do the work. Or we're not willing to pay that extra. So I'm, I am interested in that. Is that a, how serious an issue is that? What are the issues relating to it?
The experience I can share is the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act from like, that was oh, eight, oh, nine. Was the last big infrastructure push and I think in, it just depends on the commodity you're using and what's going on. So concrete and steel will likely be affected through this. It's a lot of bridge and road stuff. Uh, I don't know to what extent it'll be impacted. Back in two thousand nine, some things that people said would be high bid fine and some things that you weren't expecting were high. So I don't know, we can't predict it and we can't command control of it. It is good to be ahead of it. It is good to be ahead of it for your own personal purse to spend. It's also good to be ahead of it because whatever infrastructure plan is approved, if you're shovel ready, your project can jump ahead of other projects, even if they rank higher because you're shovel ready and they're not. So it is good to be fast with design during these periods of time and have your projects ready to go. I would also say, one more thing I want to say is, because we're, we can pause. We do have a few months left to get language ready. It is a big lift to get to that point where you say go or no go. So you are going to burn time that you may not get back and use. But if you said tonight, we're comfortable around these six projects and around this number, then I think we got to dive into design with a consultant and get as much cost figured out and conceptual design figured out up to the point where we release this to final language. So I, I've given you our best guesses because this has moved fast, but I believe there is more we should do to dial this in as much as possible before we go, if you decide to go. So.
I appreciate that. Um, and, and, you know, I think, I think you're hearing a, a lot of, a lot of different angles on this set of problems. We know there's uncertainty. Everybody in council knows there's uncertainty. I think it's a question of the relative level of it and what's, what's comfortable and what's not. What's going to get, you know, are you going to get to a place where you have a ballot measure that, you know, that the voters would say, I understand this, I get it. And I, I, you know, there's uncertainties, but we have a better idea of where we're going to be and where we're going and, you know, to meet, for example, the points that are, that are raised by councilmembers Lipton and Lonnie, I think, it, it sounds like they're, they're just not convinced based on the comments that I've heard so far, not convinced that those, those numbers are have cured enough to use a term to be, you know, sturdy enough to, to rest a, you know, a proposal on. And I don't know whether you could get that information.
I don't think anyone is, hold. I'm trying to be confident in this discussion and give you the best information, but I don't think there's a single person on staff that says we should rush into anything. We're trying to respond to, uh, the desire to have this discussion.
Right.
To dial it into a decision point. So everyone's perspectives are correct here. This is a big scary thing. I think if you really want to do it, then it, instead of saying, we're doing six projects and it's going to be horrible if we don't do all six. Maybe you have to go into your ballot measure with language that says, we want to get six done, but our exit strategy might be five. And we're just being transparent about that. And by the way, as a council, we've prioritized these six projects this way. So number five and number six are last on the list for these reasons, and they may or may not get done because of world dynamics. That's just an honest answer.
Yeah. And I, I don't know from the standpoint of the, of a ballot measure, however we deal with this, whether that works or not. I, I certainly can't speak to that. I guess what I'm wondering, uh, is whether you, whether you believe you could get to, you, you know, to meet the concerns that Mayor Pro Tem and Councilmember Lipton are raising in the time that you have between now and when we would have to go to the voters with a measure.
If we had more time to do a little more design, like I said, we only have a month or two to dive into this and apply a lot of resources. And there was some exit ramp on some of the ballot language. That combination of things would provide some level of agreement of this is our best guess now, and this is our priorities to spend until we're out of money. And you would build at least four of them, right? Probably. And then maybe five, maybe six. But at least you've gotten out of the gates fast. You've gotten to the market as fast as you can, and you've taken advantage of the interest rates as they are.
Yeah. No, I appreciate that. That's helpful. What I'm, what I'm hearing is you're not going to be able to get there to what, at, at least your understanding of what Mayor Portem and and Councilmember Lipton said on all of the projects by that time. You're, you're to be able to, to have the level of confidence that I think they're, they've suggested they'd like to have. I, I guess, you know, this is.
Yes.
Pardon me?
That's a fair statement. Yeah, we'll get to that level.
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, at some level you can get to, you know, you can get to a lot of certainty with a lot of time, a lot more certainty. You just, you know, that, that the question is whether it's worth it. But let me, let me stop because other people need to talk and I, those are.
We'll come back. Councilmember Lay, we'll come back for sure. And I think just jumping around to folks is good to get all the different perspectives out on the table.
I totally agree.
Councilmember Fagin.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. First, when you're talking about, uh, bonding or taxing for six projects and we'll, we'll, you know, probably do three, maybe four, if you're lucky, five. That reminds me of RTD and light rail. And so I don't think that that's the kind of situation that we want to put ourselves in where we're promising something that we can't deliver. I would rather say we're going to do these three projects. And if we have extra money, then we'll do number four, five or six. And my preference would be if we're going to go that way to start with Highway forty two, where we would get some matching funds from the state, from the county, from C dot, from wherever that we would not get from the other three projects. And so I, I would start with that so that we don't lose out on that, those matching funds. But I would prefer to start small and then give them more than we asked or what we promised.
Thank you, Councilmember Fagin. And I'll just add in that the, I don't think we, for the underpasses that are listed, I don't think we currently can anticipate matching funds. I mean, we will absolutely try to do a good tip application for any of them. Or like a revitalizing Main Streets grant or a safer Main Streets grant. But for Highway forty two, I think the bikeway and the roadway, uh, improvements and some of the, um, transit and, and maybe even some underpass, but I don't think we can count it in. But I also don't think we can count it out. And I also don't think we can count it out on the other projects, but your point about listing the projects we will do and then listing some other projects that we could do if there are excess revenues, I think is spot on a, a very, a very good idea. Thanks for that.
Well, the other issue with Highway forty two is that they are going to come through and do some improvements there. And we need to kind of coordinate our timeframe with their timeframe so that, you know, we're not putting in an underpass and then they come through and tear it out or vice versa. So somehow we have to coordinate with what else is being done on Highway forty two.
Absolutely. Thank you. Um, City Manager Balsor and then Mayor Pro Tem Maloney and then Councilmember Lipton.
So I just wanted to say in terms of the, of the actual ballot language, so what about bond council tells us is that, you know, you should speak pretty broadly to, uh, transportation projects that you're hoping to address. And then what we talked about was having a resolution with intent, but you don't put it in the ballot language so that you have some flexibility recognizing that the conditions may change. So there isn't going to be a hundred percent certainty if you really want to have the flexibility to do this and take bond council advice on how you should, um, make those questions, um, flexible moving forward.
Thank you, City Manager Balsor. And in, and we have a history in Lewisville in the past of doing that with resolutions that lay out what the council intends to do in the resolution. So it would be, the community would be used to seeing that. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. So I, I, I guess first I have a question for the city manager. Uh, I just want to make sure clarification on the staffing and resources. The one point four million dollars that we're talking about, uh, for five years for the project management and so forth, that is not budgeted. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
All right. So that was, I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. The, the second part of that question is, is that something that can, can be included with a bond? I mean, can that project cost? Because I consider it to be project cost, be part of the project.
So it can't be included in the bond question or the construction question? You'd have to ask a separate question for maintenance and operations staffing. So it would be a separate question specific to staffing.
Okay, that's, that's a good clarification. So that's similar to what we did at the rec center.
Correct, correct.
The, the other thing I would like to mention is, uh, Deb mentioned, uh, what I call project prioritization. I think if, if this is something that the majority wants to move ahead with, we need to put this in prioritization because that is an important part of this discussion. And, you know, I, I am, you've heard me say it already a few times, but I'm taken back by the fact that Dillon Road was crossed off in the staff report where I considered that to be one of the most critical projects, um, that are, that is on this list because of the connectivity and the amount of traffic that that would generate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, next up we have Councilmember Lipton.
You know, hearing the conversation and thinking a bit more, I, I don't want anybody to get the impression I'm saying greatly slowed down. I'm, I guess what I'm saying is greatly slowed down with commitment issue bonds. But in terms of doing this additional level of design, we can do, and we can use internal resources to do it. So getting to shovel ready, I think you'll end up almost in the same place. So it's not, it takes a year to two years to do design of these kind of projects. So if you're going to do some more design for the next six months and get better cost estimates, you're not going to lose a whole lot of time in the delivering the final product, but you will provide better cost estimates and do a better job informing the public of what these things are going to be. I also agree with Pro Tem Maloney's comments about Dillon Road. I think that would be an extremely useful connection to have and should be prioritized as high as some of the others that are on the list. My last question though, is we gave, we were provided with decision packages for twenty million and forty million. Why are we limited to twenty million and forty million? Or is there going to be something less than twenty million or something between twenty and forty million?
We just, as council, gave that direction to staff at the last council meeting, just to come forward with two packages that equal those dollar amounts. So we could have this type of discussion, but we have limited the scope to that. So if we want to say forty eight million so that it's inclusive of all of the underpasses, then the effect of that is that we would need additional revenue. So we would have to ask the voters if they were willing to pay the additional amount. I mean, so we, we limited the scope ourselves.
But we're not limited to changing that in subsequent, you know, decision making.
Well, I mean, once we issue bonds, we are.
I know, I know, but you can go higher, we can go lower, we can find something in between if we desire to do that before we go to that next step. Okay.
Yeah. And just so everybody is on the same page that's watching from home too, the Highway forty two package has two of the underpasses that are listed in the underpass package. So there's actually quite a lot of overlap between the two packages. They're just examples that the city council asked for to facilitate this conversation. So we can include whatever we think are the most high priority projects for the community with all the input that we've gotten. And we had thousands of comments in the transportation master plan that helped inform those projects that got listed in the transportation master plan. So that's the good thing. Councilmember Lay.
Thanks. Yeah, this, this is a, it's a very hard one. I mean, the, the whole thing is, is hard because this is a very big set of proj- uh, uh, projects, no matter how we slice it. Um, and I appreciate Councilmember Lipton's suggestion that maybe the number if, it, it really does seem like this is something that people do want to do. I mean, there's, I, I think a consensus that a, um, a measure, we haven't really discussed the complete structure of the measure, but that getting a lot or some or all of this infrastructure built is is something that everybody wants to do. It's a question of how quickly and with what level of certainty do we, do we move forward? I, I guess I have a, a couple of, of thoughts. One is that we're, you know, if we're talking about going to voters on anything, it sounds like the question is whether it's twenty one or twenty two. If that, if I'm right, that, you know, we, we have some consensus that somewhere we go one or, and, and I think that going to the voter, voters need to be making this decision. This is one where it really is a good thing that the voters have to make this decision because we've said for years that, look, everybody wants these things. They come to us, they say they want this infrastructure, great. Now it's decision time. And so I, I think that's good. I have been on council and the entire time I've been on council, there have been connectivity issues that people in Ward one have clamored about and with really good reason. And, uh, uh, Councilmember Dickinson described that very well. That there are people in North End and in the northeast quadrant of the city, if you will, who really have less feeling of connection in this community to one another. I think we're doing a better job. I think getting the, the one underpass done on forty two is, is huge. Honestly, I really am very proud of that. Took a long time to do that. And so, um, I, I think that it's incredibly important and the voters have said over and over to us, not voters, the, the residents in their comments to us have said they The the residents in their comments to us have said they want more overpasses or underpasses. They want infrastructure. And I think we need to find find good ways to to get that done. But that's, I don't think I'm saying anything that anybody probably disagrees with. I am. I am concerned with the amount of staff time this takes and whether this jumbles up some of our priorities. I am concerned about do, you know, are are voters more likely to approve? What we want to do in the fall or in the in the year after that, you know? I think. You know, I could see plenty of people saying, gee, you why not let some of the dust settle? On. The in various infrastructure efforts that are being funded elsewhere nationally. I do think that. The other thing I'd say is that I am in agreement with Councilmember Fahey. That forty-two, I mean, it's easy for me to say because that's the ward that I represent. But that corridor is really important. It's going to get, it's going to get busier and busier. It's a place where we can do a lot in terms of connectivity. And wearing, you know, the hat that I'm going to have to wear tomorrow, which is. On the Urban Rental Authority, on the RRC. I think some of what we can do there is that we probably can seek. Some assistance on some of this from the RRC in those in those areas. We'd have to, but I I think we have an ability to to make a very big. Step toward that connectivity and revitalizing that area with some of these infrastructure developments. So I, you know, I'm. I'm still struggling with the timing. But and and I do, I mean, I appreciate all the points that have been made. But I I I am am very struck by the fact that we've been talking about this for a long time. And we keep talking about it. And at some point, what the voters do want, and they can tell us by. Deciding and helping us. You know? Do they have the courage of their own convictions, of their own wallets? And I, you know, at some level, it's going to be, it's important to get this to them to have them make that decision. And so I guess I'm, I'm, you know, I'm potentially more inclined to to jump in and push. To get as much information as we possibly can, to be as broad in language as we need to be. And to try to do it in the off year, maybe when we're more likely to get it passed. I think that's been our experience. But anyway, that's. That's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you. So the the staff resources issue has come up and I think it's a serious concern that we all have in making sure that we address it. And so from from my perspective, having some kind of full court press to get information so we can make a decision. Only puts more stress on the situation. And so from my perspective, if we go to the voters and say, these are the best estimates we have. We have design ranging ranging from zero percent to ninety percent. I mean, full transparency of what we have on these projects. And, you know, like City Manager has said, you lay out a real resolution with the types of projects we're planning to fund with a measure. And then if it is funded and if the staff is funded, as Mayor Protem Maloney laid out, we would need to ask two questions. One for the capital bonding, one for the staff resources that are associated with it. And if it is passed, then they can start designing it and building it. But to to say that we're going to have everybody run around with their hair on fire for four months to make a decision in July. To me, that that doesn't seem like like a measured approach to take right now. I just feel like we should continue on and the the way that we can. The way that we can keep things from going off the rails, in my opinion, is to be as clear as possible that we would want to move forward with a bond measure or we don't. That we want to move forward with funding against existing funding or we want new funding or we don't. But I think this hybrid where we try to get everybody to do everything under the sun, I think that's where we run into problems. So I mean, that's just my perspective and I understand the merits of having more information and I want more information. But I have enough information to make a decision that we could ask the voters if they would want to approve money. At a very low interest rate to do transportation infrastructure projects that they've been asking us for. So I mean, that's kind of where I'm coming from. It's not like I'll die on my sword on this. I do think the other approaches that have been described are fine. I just think they put more stress on the staff. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate it. I I would just, I would just add that I'm I'm very interested. I know a number, number of people brought up the the. The powerline trail, the Dillon Road underpass. I'd be very interested in a package that that includes that. I do think it's a high priority. It's an important piece of connectivity. You know, one of the things that I think that the pandemic has brought me is a lot more time. To walk around Louisville. During the day and appreciate our trails. And, you know, the 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 underpass on Cherry that we have here that connects the Coal the Coal Creek Trail. With the with the sidewalk along Cherry, obviously in Ward three. It's, it's, you know, I I pass into that now all the time. And and it, you know, just, it's a remarkable amenity that we have. That we that that I think people really appreciate. I'm, I'm, I'm of the opinion that, you know, I think, I think being honest with the voters. About where these projects are and about the sort of the way that we would, you know, propose to fund them. And the fact that some of the projects, you know, there's a list of projects and the ones at the bottom may not get funded. But, you know, that that we're we're honest about that. And and I think that, you know, people can then make a decision. We're not asking. I think it's important for us as a council to keep in mind that by putting something on the ballot. We haven't actually made any other decision other than to just ask the voters what they think. And and so, you know, if this is important to people, then I think we come up with the best. The best package to implement their desires and their the amenities that they want. And then leave it up to them to decide if they're willing, they're willing to pay for them. So that's, that's, I think, an important thing to keep in mind that if we decide to move forward with a ballot initiative. We actually haven't done anything other than put something on the ballot. So we're really bringing it up to the voters at that point, and I'm willing to do that.
Councilmember Dickinson?
I remember what specifically I was. Hoping to add, but I know I know one thing was, sorry, I had my hand up a while ago. I've been listening. No, it's fine. It's great. I think, you know, one thing that I I do want to avoid. I I like the, so Councilmember Lipton, I like the idea of, or I I think I understand better the idea that, well, listen, there's a process. It's designed then build, so we can design this year and build next year or, you know, so to speak. And we can ask for the money next year. And it doesn't necessarily slow the whole project down. That resonated with me a little bit, but then my, then I was, I was struggling because I'm thinking. Wow, I really don't want to waste money in designing a bunch of things we're never going to do. Like, I really don't want to spend staff time and resources and hire a consultant to do a bunch of work designing six. Underpasses or at least the five that we have got less design on, so the four we have even less design on. When we're talking right here, saying right now, like, we're probably not going to get to all six, even if we bonded tomorrow for the whole six. Still going to struggle to get to the sixth. So spend hundreds of thousands of dollars designing the sixth one today. We we won't even get to it until twenty twenty-eight. Does seem like. Probably, you know, just a different version of of a waste, a waste of money. So I'm I'm just conflicted on that. I think that. Yeah, I think, Mayor, I think you kind of put it well, that I'm I'm trying to figure out how to not waste staff time. How to use that time well. I think it's like I would love for them to be able today to hire consultants that are based on the funding we're about to get. Except we don't know if we're going to get that funding until we've done, you know, it's just kind of a bit of a chicken and the egg thing for for me. But it it seems like the right process is to say, I think I'm agreeing with you, Mayor, that the the right process is to say. These are the projects we want to do. These are them ranked one through six. I'm kind of hearing that from several people to say, we want to be clear. Like, if we, if you bought, if we vote to bond for this project, we're, the first underpass is going to be this one. And the second one's going to be this one, and we're going to go down the line until we run out of money. And we're being clear that this is where we're headed. And they'll see action on on priority one soon enough to to believe us. But that it would be sort of impossible to get to the details we need to get to before we know if this is something we're going to do. So we've got pretty high level estimates, we have ideas of what this will cost. And it's just going to get more expensive the longer we wait, both from the cost of borrowing money and the cost of the project itself. We want to be on our front foot here as the whole country is going to be doing infrastructure. Let's get going. So I, you know, I'm I'm struggling with a lot of the pieces, but I think I'm I'm leaning towards the idea of. Definitely having a clear priority of the order in which we do them. And that would take more discussion, I think, from us to decide what is that right priority list, both cost and time and all those things. Location and use and connectivity, all those questions. But that we would push to prioritize those, bond with general idea. And bond for as much as we think we would need to complete the six over the next ten years, right? And then that would be a an enormous thing that we had done, both financially and. And just project wise, and it would be, it would be an enormous ten year project, but you got to start somewhere. So I think I think that's all I have to.
Thanks, Councilmember Dickinson. Director Kower, your hand was up, but then you talked and it didn't come down. I just want to check in. Did you want to say something else? City Manager Balser?
Yes, I do, but I'll wait.
I just want to say I appreciate this conversation. If you want to move forward tonight, we will need to decide which projects are in the list. And we will need to decide what the funding structure should be so that we can then proceed to work. To get a little more clarity around our costs and also what the the package will look like. We will need the time to do that. We will need to make those decisions tonight.
Thank you, City Manager, and I'm sorry, my internet connection is a little unstable this evening. Councilmember Fahey?
Thank you. I I was going to let Kurt say what he wanted to say.
Yeah, just quickly, just to help you guys understand how bidding works, because we were throwing around percentages and cost variances. Three of our last biggest projects, your concrete this year, your Highway forty-two in short intersection project we just completed. And your Highway forty-two underpass project. The difference between the lowest bidder and the highest bidder on those big projects was thirty percent. So there's thirty percent spread just on your bidding. Most strategic thing for us to think about is a city in a hot construction environment. We may bid some of these packages together to put together a larger package that makes it contractors want to chase our bid. So that we can try to drive those numbers down. So it may not always be that we're going to deliver six separately. We may deliver three and three or some combination there. So that's just something I wanted you guys to understand that information and have it. And then I would also say, like, this isn't going to be easy, no matter how we do it. But these big infrastructure things only come by every once in a while. And when you're positioned to spend the money, you tend to get the money. So I'm not, that doesn't make my life easy to say that, but it's my job and our job to go get the money when it comes available. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Director Kower. So to City Manager Balser's point, I think we need to identify the timeline that we're talking about. And if we want to give direction on a project list and that type of funding. Councilmember Fahey, I saw you move, but your hand got taken down and I had called on you. So would you like to go now?
Yes, please. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that with the addition of the the trails. The underpasses at various trail points. It's also interesting to me that there is not a trail or underpass proposed in any of Ward two. And one that would be incredibly helpful for a lot of people would be one either at Dillon or Cherry. But particularly at Dillon and McCaslin. I personally have seen a lot of people walking with suitcases across McCaslin from the hotels to the bus stop or back again. And people just trying to safely cross McCaslin at Dillon, because that's when all that congestion starts. And people's tempers get a little short.
Thanks, Councilmember Fahey, and the proposal at Dillon is to hard surface the trail there on that. From that underpass to the bus stop, basically to the bikeway. So people from the hotels could go that way then and use all the underpasses and the infrastructure that's in. So part of it is in Ward two, just as a clarification, the hardscape there, part of that goes into Ward two. The underpass itself is not, I recognize that, and good point about McCaslin. So did anyone want to put forward? I mean, I've heard a lot about adding in. So it sounds like there's an interest to have staff look at the six underpasses. I don't know if there's consensus around that. I don't know if people wanted to remove something. Councilmember Brown?
I'll go ahead and, I mean, my preference would be to move forward with the the forty million dollar package. But I would add, I would just add the the power, the powerline trail crossing Dillon in to that. I realize that would make our package bigger than forty. But I I'd prefer to start there and I think that 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 would be a good package of of. Of underpasses and across the city and and a good, a good infrastructure package.
Discussion from other folks?
You know, I think it's interesting to look at as a as a group as well, like when I look at an underpass at Main and South Boulder Road. South Boulder Road and Highway forty-two and Gulch and Via Appia. It's like, well, now that's a lot of, like, I could see if you had three of them, you wouldn't need the fourth. Or if you had a different three, you wouldn't need a different four, like it, I don't think that you, the outcry for an underpass would be as much if you had some of the others. So on their own, you know, I think if you were going to do one underpass in that area, maybe South Boulder Road and forty-two. Because it crosses both potentially, well, I guess it wouldn't be diagonal, but it's at a major intersection. But we already have one north of that, and if you had one at Main, that one at South Boulder and forty-two becomes less important. And and same with the Via Appia, it becomes less important when there's one farther west on South Boulder and potentially one farther east. So I think it's kind of an interesting, like, when I look at the map and look at where they'd all go, sort of same thing with the Dillon near Monarch. There's one on eighty-eighth and one on Dillon at the golf course. And then a third in that area is a lot for that one area, but I get they have different purposes. They all have good purposes. And but just kind of thinking about the clustering of them and 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 so when I'm thinking about rank order. You know, I I might jump around and and say like, well, Main and South Boulder is the first most important. But if that were true, then South Boulder and McCaslin sudden, or South Boulder and forty-two suddenly drops to maybe way less important to me than. If the other one didn't exist. So I just kind of want to throw that out there too, that if we're going to contemplate, not maybe. City Manager, you're saying that you need a clear, clear direction on which underpasses we would want in the mix. Do you need a clear understanding of priority? Because if if we can save that discussion for another night, then I can just, I guess, shut up.
Well, so, yeah, you know, the more, I think it's exactly what the mayor said, the more clarity, the better. Because we are going to go. Are gonna go and try to refine these a little bit um, in terms of design, which will take some effort, so if. You know, whatever your priority is, that might suggest more time on one versus another. So again, the the more information we have, the the better moving forward.
Well, Mayor, can I just throw out in order for people to react to?
If you dare, if you're that brave and bold, go for it.
I would say uh, Main and South Boulder Road, one reason being that it is ninety percent designed, so it's the one we can move the fastest on. While it is super expensive, it's also because it's expensive, it's important to get done on the earlier end, so that the five percent increase isn't as. Big a deal. My second priority would be uh, the Dylan Road one. Um, my third priority would be. The Gulch. And then fourth would be South and forty two. Fifth would be South Boulder and Via Appia. And then sixth, for the reasons I said, would be South Boulder Road and. Um, forty second or Highway forty two, just because at that point, there would be enough underpasses that that may not be as. Necessary, and so that would be the one that if we never got that, I wouldn't be that sad if we had the other five. And again, if we didn't get Via Appia and South Boulder Road, that to me is would otherwise be my sixth most important. So that's kind of, that's why I I ranked them in in that order, so people can can react to that first thought.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
So South Boulder Road, Maine, I want to get clarification from Kurt. I believe you said that was thirty percent or less designed.
Oh, you might figure it, sorry.
I think it was the Bullhead Gulch was ninety percent.
Sorry about that. Bullhead ninety, yes, and um, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, so um. Counselor Dickinson, can you give us a list again? Because what I heard you say was South Boulder Road, Maine, Dillon, Bullhead Gulch. And then I heard three forty twos.
Uh, the next was South and forty two. That was my fourth. And then South and uh, Sa- South Boulder Road and Via Appia.
Okay, I didn't hear.
Oh, so so so, sorry, yeah, South Street and South Boulder Road, sorry, so that's a little confusing. So the fifth priority was South Boulder Road and Via Appia, and the sixth priority was South Boulder Road and Highway forty two.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion on the order? Councilmember Brown.
I think I think uh, Councilmember Dickinson's order. Uh, at least as an initial draft, sounds like a a logical way to order these things.
Thank you. Um, I had done this exercise myself um, in a spreadsheet, just. Thinking through this, and it's it's a really hard exercise to do, because they're all important to different people for different reasons. So the two that are along Highway forty two, the one that's at South Boulder Road and the one that's at South Street. Um, serves the Highway forty two plan well. One of them would be a north-south connection for the bikeway. That would be put in and the trail um, on the east side, and one of them connects. The downtown, old town area to the trail system. Um, so that that's the purpose of those two. Um, the one that um. Has been really hard for us has been Bullhead Gulch because of working with the railroad. And so while the priority is really high for the community, I don't know if we can deliver that on the one to three year timeframe. To me, even if they start, even if we start working on that in year one, it's more of like a five year delivery project. So I don't, I'm not disputing, I don't know. That I dispute the order, and I think that they all are important and should be included, and we should scope the. Project um, appropriately, but because of the railroad uncertainty that and. The uncertainty that we've had on timing of that one, the Bullhead Gulch was low, it fell lower on my list, but not because there's not tremendous community support. Just because of concern around delivery. Any other discussion? Mayor Proton Maloney.
So, of course, I did the same thing you did, Mayor, and my list is a little bit different. I had forty two and south first. Um, because you know what? I cross forty two on my bike all the time in between traffic, and it's kind of crazy, and that would be really nice, because I'm getting over to the trails. Um, South Road, Boulder Road in Maine was my second one. Uh, the third one was South Bowl Road and forty two. I understand where you're coming from, Counselor Dickinson, about area and being able to move around and so forth. And maybe Kurt can give us more information if I have this wrong, but. Yeah, my understanding is when we redo forty two, we're really looking at a significant bikeway on the east side of forty two. Um, and in order to be able to go north, then you would need to have that as a a connector, and so that's why I had that next. I had Dylan's four, Via Appia's five, and for the same reasons as the mayor talked about, um, the reason why we backed up with the Bullhead Gulch. Uh, was the cost escalation and then working with the railroad. So that was my. My list, which I think will, seven of us will have a different prioritization.
And and each community member as well, you know, and and we did get a lot of feedback on all of these as high priorities in the transportation master plan. From from various people. Any other comments on the ordering? So it sounds like there, I I haven't heard much dispute around including all six for us to continue forward with. So if we could just talk a little bit about um, funding, the staff put forward property taxes, a potential new source of revenue that we could consider. Or we could consider looking at using some of our existing revenue and the property tax. I don't think that for the forty eight million. That there's a version that wouldn't take substantial rearrangement of the budget, if I understood what staff was saying. So is there an interest to carry forward? A hybrid of using existing revenue and asking for new revenue, or would people want to solely look at using new revenue?
Mayor, if I understand you correctly, you're saying. I was admittedly zoned out for the very first part. Um, so what I what I heard you saying was. Um, all tax or some bond, some tax, but all bond isn't feasible. Is that correct?
So I'll I'll say that what I believe you to mean is what I mean, but I don't, my language is slightly different than yours. So in either. In any case, we would be bonding. So in one case, we would be bonding against existing sales tax revenue, and and in one case, we would be bonding against a new property tax. So I believe I understood you to be saying. Bond against existing revenue and or ask for new revenue and bond against it, but in any case, I believe we would be asking the voters for a bond measure.
Okay, but but so my point being, sorry. Funding versus uh, against existing versus future, but but you don't think it, based on the um, packet and everything, that it's possible to. Bond the entire amount against existing.
I don't believe the staff thinks that it's possible from the way that it was presented in the packet. City Manager Ballser?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, what staff suggested as a starting point was twenty million. Could be potentially utilized to bond against future sales tax, and as I said, we do do have some concerns about. What that means for future revenues, and you will have to make some decisions very soon about what you want to cut to. To uh, address the additional one point three million you need to find in Capital Projects Fund. And just to be clear, that's for twenty million.
And just if you were asking what my opinion is, Councilmember Dickinson, I think that. I think we could bond against some some amount of existing revenue. Absolutely agree with the city manager that we would have to look at what our uh, six year CIP is. And how we would do it, but I I do think there's some ability to bond exist against existing revenue, but if the group doesn't. Want to put us in that position as a community and wants to have the flexibility we currently have with budgeting, then we could ask for all new revenue. Any discussion? Councilmember Brown.
I I I favor a kind of a a a mix, I guess. Of bonding against existing revenue along with new with new revenue. Uh, I think that, you know, I. I'm just looking at the sort of price tags. And where we are currently. Um, I think that probably makes the most sense from a. But but, you know, both with fitting with people's finances as well as the city's existing finances, so. That that would be what I would favor.
Mayor Proton Maloney.
Um, I I would uh, suggest we we could seriously consider a hybrid approach to this. You know, I I've got the budget book open, and I'm looking at it, and and yeah, this is gonna be hard to do. If we use existing sales tax revenue as part of this, but. Um, I'm willing to do that. I think that, you know, transportation right now, right now takes up the bulk of our CIP and. You know, that's where it should be invested, so I'm willing to to take a hard look at the CIP to come up with a hybrid way of funding this.
Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I I think that uh, Protemp just said what I was gonna say. I I I think we want a hybrid, or at least I. I'd be in favor of that.
So um, I think the question will be, you know, what process do we want to go through to identify? How we would amend the CIP, the five year CIP and align it with, you know, being able to bond against existing revenue, or whether we would just say we're gonna use. The existing revenue to pay for the uh, O and M side of things, um, or how how we would want to proceed with. Fleshing out the details around the hybrid approach. City Manager Ballser? It might be a legacy hand?
No, no, I know my, I, but I I do need direction on how much you want for existing and how much you want for a property tax increase, because we. Again, we we then we need to go back and work with our bond council, and what they would say, um, when we had talked to them originally about a forty million project. Um, twenty million uh, CIP, twenty million, I'm sorry, sales tax, twenty million against existing revenue, twenty million. Additional property tax, what they had suggested is that you would want to ask for. Thirty million as it relates to property tax to give yourself that flexibility, and then ten million as it relates to the. Sales tax, um, you could do, again, you could do that in one question that does not include staffing, so. Uh, but we do, we do need direction tonight on how you would want to structure that.
City Manager Ballser, can you explain that a little more? Just you were saying that the bond council thought it would be worth pursuing a ten million dollar bond. On existing revenue?
Yeah, I mean, that's it, the question would, so it actually, what what it what it does is um, a a a different municipal, so. I I don't have all the details. This, this is the part where we don't have all the folks here to help us have these conversations. But that it gives you more flexibility based on, so for example, if, I mean, and this is highly unlikely in Boulder County, but if if um. Sales tax, well, I'm sorry, not property tax, but sales tax, if revenues drop precipitously, then you have an ability to use more on your. On the property tax side, um, because the sales tax is more variable. Um, so it's just, it gives you more flexibility if you think you want twenty to ask for more. And you know, bond council is always gonna tell you to provide more flexibility. Um, so it just, it again, it just depends on what you want to do and. Um, and you know, I I would just say that, you know, the conversations about how we want to address this, if we do use a hybrid model, we will have to make those decisions. Soon, well, I guess we want to understand what we would do based on if there was a vote passage in November, so um, pretty soon.
So um, are any council, thank you for that clarification, City Manager Ballser. And um, are there any council members who would like to discuss, you know, an order of magnitude that we're talking about of. Putting existing revenue like an annual amount forward that staff could use as a starting place? So for example, they, for that twenty million dollar number, they had a repayment. Uh, amount in our packet, and I just can't get there fast enough.
So one point three, I think?
One point three was a was a a placeholder they had in there. Is that a good starting point that council members want staff to use for the hybrid approach? One point three of our money and ask for additional funds for the rest, or is there a different starting place people would like to to give direction on? Mayor Proton Maloney.
Well, I think we need to make sure that we or not forget that we took this to fifty million dollars. So if anything, we're looking at twenty and thirty or ten and forty, something along those lines, so. You know, twenty is a stretch. Uh, for for coming out of the CIP. If we reduce that down to half at ten, which means that we would still have forty on the. Uh, the property tax side, so I'm just, I'm just mentioning that for clarification. I I'm not sure which approach I like, but. Let's not forget, we're really talking about fifty million at this point.
Thank you, Mayor Proton Maloney. So do we want to start at a million from the CIP as a starting place? That brings it down a little bit. I think it's, if you've studied the CIP, I think it's definitely doable.
Yeah, I guess, Mayor, I'm I'm just reading that section of the packet again, and um. And so I don't know if Director Watson wants to chime in on, but you know, like, even though reserves continue to increase from twenty three to twenty six. They do not increase fast enough to completely cover one point three million annual debt service payment. So. You know, in some ways, I'm just, I guess I I could use a little more explanation from Director Watson, because in some places it looks like. And my reading is like, okay, we we have enough, you know, we have approximately three point two five million. But we don't want to use all that. I'm I'm just, I guess I'm feeling a little confused, and I'm sure any members of the public or anyone watching in the future might needs a little bit more explanation of what is. Um, reasonable to take. So you're asking, you're asking us to get, put a number out there, and I'm feeling a little bit unequipped to.
And before I turn it over to Finance Director Watson, I'm sure he'll have a good answer, but part of your question is is a policy question, because I mean, the question. Really is what are our highest priority projects to fund out of the Capital Projects Fund, and so he won't be able to answer that portion. So i- in, the Capital Projects Fund gets about six and a half million dollars a year, and like the city council has tried to set. Priorities based on community desires and expectations, right? And so like we have our key program indicators, key performance indicators to see, are we on track? With the types of things that we're doing. Um, we've been told our steady state for pavement is three and a half million, so you can take that right off the top, so you really only have three million left for everything else. Except that we've separated the rec fund out, so rec has its own Capital Projects Fund. Open space has dedicated funding. It's not enough to cover all of parks and open space, so there are still projects that get funded from Capital Projects Fund. You know, golf, we had intended to be funded from the enterprise, but when we did the exercise around it, it wasn't able to, although last year was a great year for golf, so maybe the numbers. So so the the question is, what is the highest priority for the use of that last three million dollars? And if it's this, then then you have three million dollars, but then you couldn't do anything else. So if it's really some combination of this and other things. Then that's really the the question is like, how do you prioritize these transportation projects with all the other things? And just remember that over the last seven years or so, we've operationalized a number of what. I would have considered capital expenditures, so some of the renewal type things on building and infrastructure. You'll find those have been moved over, the previous city manager moved a lot of those expenditures over into the operational budget. So a lot of the day to day replacement things are not actually in the Capital Projects Fund anymore, but. Make but city uh, Finance Director Watson will be able to answer the technical side of your question, but you'll still have to wrestle with the policy side yourself.
Well, uh, I think that was a great explanation. I don't know really what to add to that, except I think what one of your questions is. Uh, relates to the increase in the fund balance. In the Capital Projects Fund over the next five years. And on page, what is it? Uh, we on say page six fifty four, we show that graphically. On page six fifty five, we tell you that that's actually increasing about eight hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. Per year from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six, that's the average. So the reason that that that's in there is that we're talking about removing one point three million dollars annually. Uh, for for payment on the bonds. But in terms of cutting, if you want to maintain that growth rate, we would have to cut one point three million. If you don't want to maintain that growth rate, you can net. The one point three and the eight seventy five, so the affordability, so to speak, is maybe a cut of a half a million per year. But then you're not gonna grow that balance as we have in our in our plan, so I I'm is um.
I think that's, I think that's super helpful, and and I can hear Heather Ballser in my ear, kind of like. That's great, if you guys want to put a million or one point five or two million a year towards. This, but what are you going to cut, right? So and I and I I think. You know, that's not the conversation today, is what are we going to cut, but I think we need to be. Aware of that reality, and whether it's a half a million or more, that we can't have our cake and eat it too, right? We can't focus on this project. And not take something from another uh, initiative, right, that someone else cares deeply about, including. Us, and so, you know, I'm, I guess I'm trying to be aware of that, that. That if I say like, well, I think we should do one point five, well, then that would mean we're gonna have to cut maybe eight hundred thousand from something else. Or if we just do a million, then we're almost at break even there, um, potentially without growing the account. So those those answers from both the mayor and and from Director Watson are super helpful for me. Um, so I'll let Jeff go now.
Councilmember Lipton.
Yeah, I have a, Kevin, if I could ask you a question, it seems like I I know we're putting our focus on the capital fund. But what about the general fund? So the general fund continues to grow. We have uh, balances in excess of our target balances. So is there any way to get support from the general fund? Towards this project and not just look at the capital fund?
Sure, if you decide, you could transfer funds from the general fund, as you know, um, and I don't have that right in front of me. But the general fund has about a ten million dollar balance. Uh, the minimum amount per our um. Financial policies is around three million. I'm doing this off the top of my head, so there is some excess funds that we want to use now. I would caution a little bit about using those funds uh, too much, but. Uh, because that's gonna pay, you know, some of our ongoing expenses. But sure, I mean, the the council could decide at any budget um, year to move money from the general fund. Into the capital projects fund. I believe uh, we're just, we're we're in the middle of our audit right now, but I believe the general fund actually increased oh, in twenty twenty by about a half a million dollars, if that gives you. So that's pretty much a break even in terms of the amounts that we're talking about. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, Kevin, that, yeah, that's uh, that does, and it kind of re, I guess reaffirms what my thinking was. We, we do have more budget flexibility than just what's in the capital fund. We obviously, some of us have other ideas on how you, how to use that budget flexibility. I would prefer we look internally as much as we possibly can before we ask. The taxpayers increase their taxes for a bond. So we really, if this is our highest priority, then we should act like it's our highest priority and try to fund as much of this. Uh, from existing resources we, as we possibly can.
Thank you. Um, I was gonna say Mayor Pro Tem Lipton, you've been Mayor Pro Tem so long while I've been on council, I almost promoted you back again tonight. Um, thank you for that. And so the the reason that it, the staff have focused on the capital projects fund is because the council gave that direction to say. Bond against the capital projects tax. So I appreciate you pointing out that we could use other revenue, it wouldn't have to be dedicated from the capital projects. Um, and then you've pointed out there are other trade-offs that would have to be discussed there. So um, Councilmember Lipton, not to put you on the spot, but what process can we use? To have that discussion about the trade-off? So like if we say to the staff, you know, we want you to look at using one point five million of our existing revenue. A year. Um, what process do you want council to use to identify how we would make reductions to accomplish that?
Well, I think that would have to be in a, in a separate conversation, so everybody's got the information. I mean, we're, you know, I'm I'm not trying to uh, belittle anyone, but we're still doing, dealing with a fairly new council. When it comes to, yeah, you, um, budget issues and understand the the flow of funds and. How we do these allocations and what the various uh, you know, priorities are. So I think there's gotta be an educational component to making those kind of decisions and giving that kind of direction. I believe this council's only gone through one budget cycle. And it was kind of a, an abbreviated cycle because of the pandemic and, you know, the fact that we just, you know, didn't have a whole lot to work with, if anything. It also isn't lost on me that we do have fund balance money way above our targeted amounts. And we've always said, well, we'll find a good use for that someday. And uh, you know, we. Maybe that day has come and we should perhaps not. Use the full amount, but certainly a component of that should be applied to, you know, what seems to be our highest priority.
Thank you. I think Mayor Pro Tem Maloney may have a pathway to seeking answers. Mayor Pro Tem Maloney?
You're really setting me up here. So the the one thing I I, you know, I appreciate talking about reserves and so forth. But we're talking about a twenty-year commitment to uh, encumbering revenues. So, you know, we we have to do more than say, okay, we, you know, we may have, I don't know, two or four million dollars. And in reserves that we can use. It's a bigger issue than that. If we're gonna pay twenty million back, then we need to be looking at continuing revenues. I do believe the capital fund, um, you know, if we just take a, listen to, you know, the Director of Public Works and what he's anticipating, what we need for. The pavement program, there's money there. Um, if we go down this path, there's one point three million transportation master plan. And that was really for some on-grade things and so forth. I think there are opportunities in the capital funds. Um, I don't think it's enough. Um, I mean, it's something that um, the finance committee could work with staff on. For for some proposals, if that's the the will of the council. But I think there's opportunities and there will be some very tough policy choices.
City Manager Ballser?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to clarify. So um, and I think we said this in that council communication, but yes, we we got the direction to um. You know, assume that these funds would come from capital projects, but in the sales, in the ballot question, you would, you would probably just say um. Sales tax, so that again, that that certainly would be um, bond council's direction around that you, so then you could, if you wanted to. Move some stuff from general fund or that you had, you had that flexibility. Um, I will say, you know, to remind folks that twenty-one, we also, our our budget was cut significantly. Um. Uh, we did, so so to bring us back to even where we were, um, you know, we're we're gonna need to expend some general fund money on staffing and operation. And then we do need to figure out where um, ultimately the staffing for this and maintenance will come from. Since if if there's either a separate bond question or we're, we're gonna use it um, with existing funds.
Thank you, City Manager Ballser. So so far, it sounds like we're looking at the forty-eight million number, the revenue source is a hybrid. Uh, I'm looking at Deputy Manager Davis's questions. Um, I don't think we have. Totally answered the question of how we're going to get to the hybrid number. Um, so we'll need to work on that a little bit more on how we'll work on the general. Tax revenue side of things to identify where we want to come up with that funding from our existing budget. Um, and Megan, Deputy Manager Davis, could you tell us a little bit more about the question anticipated projects to be completed? What are you looking for there?
So again, I think that's really the 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 projects in the package. So um, you know, I think with the understanding that we would probably have a um, resolution of intent. So these would be the projects that you, you know, anticipate moving forward with. Um, and I, I think we got some clarification on that. I'm not sure if you want to have more discussion about that, but.
I think, I think where that is standing, and if everybody could just nod, is that that would include the six underpasses that have been identified. I'm seeing one nod, two nods. I see Debbie twice. Councilmember Fahey, you're on my screen twice. That's great. But you still only get to vote once. Anyone else? No objection. So I think that's where we stand with that. Um, and then you have a question here for us, ballot question, language preference? Can you just tell me a little bit more about what you're looking for from us on that tonight?
Yeah, so I think, um, you know, City Manager Ballser asked some questions about um, you know, how we would want to structure that. So I think we have covered that to some extent. Um, to to have one question. Yeah, I think that we've gotten some guidance on that. Heather, do you think that, do you need more information around that?
Yeah, so I guess, you know, I I would really like to understand how much you would like to um, use against existing revenue. Versus how much you would like for a property tax increase. Um, I, we can do that in one question. And then again, the next, uh, next question is how do you want to deal with staffing and operations?
So I'll put a proposal for us, just to put something on the table, and I hope there's great deal of discussion around it and then modification, and then we can give some direction. So the issue around staffing um, has come up. So what we did on the rec center was ask two questions, which I think is totally reasonable, and we could go that way here. One for operations and maintenance and one for um, the building, the capital construction. But an alternative we could do is ask for the capital money with the new revenue and pay for the staff work out of our existing revenue. So we saw the projections on what that would be. As one piece of it and then make up the the other piece of the existing revenue we would bond against would be, um, I would recommend that we look at a million dollars. And again, I'm putting this out here for people to have something to respond to as a starting place. Councilmembers have. Comments? Councilmember Dickinson? You're on mute.
You know what? I I noticed it before you said it.
I saw you noticed it.
Um, I have no issues with the one million. Um, I think I, uh, Councilmember Lipton, you can. Um, nod your head if I'm saying this right, but I would, I would agree with uh, Councilmember Lipton that I'd like to go more in the direction of taking from our own. So maybe float out one point five. I know that that means cutting and I I get that that, that's what that means. But um, that would go as high as one point five from existing and then the balance needed from um, a new property tax. And um, and then I agree with what, I think what I understand you're saying is. Fund the necessary FTEs from our existing CIP, separate from a question about it. Is that, is that what you're proposing, Mayor?
Just that we would.
We wouldn't ask a specific question about the staffing, we would just.
Funds.
Fund the staffing out of our CIP. And so that would be an additional expense, of course.
I would suggest that we fund the staffing out of the general fund and not out of the capital projects fund.
Okay, I think you said the capital projects when you first said it, which kind of confused me, but 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 general fund, got it.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
Councilmember Brown?
What does one million dollars a year equate to in terms of the total cost? Of the forty-eight million dollars of underpasses that we're talking about? Anybody know?
Sixteen million.
Yeah, it's probably fifteen or sixteen million.
Fifteen or sixteen, okay. That's, that sounds about right, cause I was gonna say, for some reason, I was thinking in aggregate costs. So I was gonna say like seventy thirty, which would be like fifteen thirty-five. In terms of, you know, bond things, we, existing revenue versus not. So I I think one, if that's where one million dollar uh, stands, then that's where, that sounds fine to me.
Other folks? And the the more clarity we can give, the reason why that's really helpful is that then the next time we have this conversation, there'll be more refinement around it. So really, the more discussion we can have tonight around this, the better the next conversation will go. Councilmember Lee, do you have any more energy around this? Or you're feeling good with where it stands today? And then next time we'll have more information to respond to?
Uh, am I feeling good? Uh. I I don't know that that I would say I'm necessarily feeling good. Um, you know, there. I guess I'm. You know, I'm thinking that this is, there's a lot of tax, there's a lot of taxing we're talking about. There are other taxes we've been talking about that we haven't gotten to or that we've put on hold. And I I'm not suggesting. I'm not suggesting that, I mean, I think the sustainability taxes, you know, uh. It's gonna be hard to do both this and that, that's for sure. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I, but I think we need to be mindful um, of where we're. You know, what kind of um, what what we're, we're talking about going to the voters with. I uh, and and this is the one that's on the table right now, not the sustainability piece right now, but um. Yeah, I mean, I I think I I I agree with you as far as the operations go, we fund that. We need to fund that from the general fund. That's, I don't think we want an extra tax for that. But I, I'm as comfortable as I'm probably gonna be with the current information we have.
Other council members, Councilmember Lipton, you want to weigh in on this starting place? You're okay with this as a, as a next step?
So so Mayor, just to be clear, what what is the starting place? Is it one, one million for sales tax and the rest for property tax?
Councilmember Dickinson, you put your finger up. That is what I heard, City Manager Ballser. So unless anyone heard something different. And then to, in addition to that, to pay for the um, new staff members that we would need in public works from general fund.
Okay. So does, does council wanna, so you know, as we're preparing. The twenty-two budget, does council wanna have a discussion at that point about where you would? Remove the million dollars a year, how you would fund that, or is that something you want to do after passage if that occurs? How do you want to have that conversation?
I think it makes sense to include it as a placeholder in the budgeting process, so we can see what trade-offs have to be made. Um, Councilmember Lipton, do you have an opinion on that or other things?
I was uh, trying to follow up on my uh, comment earlier about um, the urban renewal authority.
Great.
So I don't know, we're assuming that, you know, the city has to pay for all this, uh, the general fund and capital fund. Where is the urban renewal authority? And I know they haven't had a chance to discuss it. I think their, their cash flow now, I think, is in excess of a million dollars a year. If I'm, if I remember right.
Um, so I think other outside, what I, what I understood from Deputy Manager Davis's presentation is that. Staff would continue to pursue other outside revenue on all of these underpasses. But I think it's worth us, if we feel strongly that we would like participation from the LRC, we could. Ask our representative here to represent those views for us and try to find out if they're willing to participate on any of these underpasses.
Yeah, I I I took that as a given. You know, I, I don't even, I I, but I don't, that I, that that's what the council would want me to do. But the devil's in the details and we obviously, I don't speak for the LRC and we've got some work to do before that. But I think certainly as a conceptual matter or a matter of principle. Seek that support and see what the reaction is. But I think it's, I think we need to probably have a, have a presentation to them, to us.
Councilmember Lipton, does that address your question?
Well, I would like to have that conversation and some, perhaps some decision-making catch up to the rest of the process. So we need, so we know whether they're going to be in and at what level, so that we understand better how much we need to be in.
Yeah, and I, I mean, we have a meeting tomorrow morning. Obviously, we're not gonna take this up tomorrow morning. I can put it on a agenda for a future meeting. I can suggest that we need to move quickly. I don't know what more I can tell you than.
Oh, you could have a special meeting just to talk about this.
W- w- we could. I mean, I, that's why I say, but I'm just telling you, it's not gonna happen before, you know, it's not gonna happen tomorrow, but it could.
I know, I know that.
Yeah, it could happen soon. I think the question is, what's the ask? Uh, you know, and. Um, how do you, how do you want me to, to frame that? Uh, and I guess I would say, you know, Director Pierce is here too, so we're all ears.
All right, so Councilmember Lee, you'll take the topic forward for discussion a- as in a future agenda item, and then you'll report back to us on how that goes.
And I can, I I mean, to your point, Councilmember Lipton, I I certainly will emphasize the urgency of it. And that we, you know, we have it as an LRC in our power to have special meetings too. And I mean, the LRC is very, you know, it prides itself on being nimble, so we'll see how nimble.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to point out uh, that three of these proposed underpasses are in an urban renewal area. So I, you know, we, I'm, I don't have a number for you, but I would expect a significant investment from the LRC.
This is what I said earlier. I think absolutely. I mean, you know, the urban renewal money is for transformative projects. I mean, that's the best use of them, right? That's what we want. So um, that certainly would be part of my, my pitch is, you know, the time is propitious. my pitch is, you know, the time is propitious. And whether the others will go on that, we'll see. I I in anticipation of this, I certainly uh pinged the chair of the LRC to say, if you had a chance to watch tonight, that she should. She her husband is celebrating his birthday tonight, and I told her I would catch up with her tomorrow. So uh, but I mean, this is this is gonna be an important issue, and it's again, they've, you know, they we have priorities and their work plan as well, and this is gonna affect that work plan. We're gonna have a discussion about that tomorrow. So you know, we may be able to fold some of that in. I'll have to chat. I can chat with the director Pearson. I can, you know, we can see what we can do that's appropriate within the, you know, open meetings rules.
So I do have one other comment. I think I'm non muted. And you know, and like I said at the beginning of the meeting, I don't necessarily uh oppose modest tax increase to pay for transportation infrastructure, but I have to say, I think this discussion has just gotten too rich for me. And when I think about our lower income people in town, our seniors in town on fixed incomes, there's been little or no consideration about, you know, their ability to pay and to fit this in. I mean, we always think about, you know, perhaps the majority of our community that is very affluent does very well. We have also a large part of our community that doesn't fit in that category. When I look at this tax along with the the fire district tax, which I understand the necessity for, but it was a very large tax and people are still choking on that. And it's not just the residents, you know, the homes, certainly the businesses are impacted. Multiple of four, at least right now. Um, and then I, you know, I I look at, you know, like I said, the people that don't have incomes that are rising as fast as perhaps more affluent, uh, this becomes a burden. I'm very concerned about other taxes that are going to be burdened, our less affluent uh, community, including the county taxes. They're looking at additional taxes. I'm certain the school district will be doing the same as well as the state. So the additive effect of how large this has gotten with everything else that's coming our way is not going to help us in terms of our goals for trying to have lower income housing, having more equity and diversity in our community. So I'm really struggling with all this. I thought going into it, maybe we can do a modest package of, say, twenty million dollars, get us through several years of 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 need for transportation, and this thing has now bloomed into a forty eight million dollar uh, package. And for the life of me, I I just I just can't uh, I just don't see it. And I I I probably will have difficulty supporting it, but I realize I'm the only one, and that's fine. So I'm not gonna get in the way, but I'm not gonna run out and and say, I think this is a a great direction to go, which I think it's going to be hurting some people that can't afford to pay the price.
Thank you for that, councilmember Lipton. I think it's really important to be mindful of the impact of these new taxes on our residents, just you know, things do continue to add up, and so we need to be diligent on making sure we're looking at exhausting existing revenue sources first. So I really appreciate you bringing up those issues and making sure that we're protecting people that need, you know, need to be spoken up for. I think that's a great point you've raised. Councilmember Fahey.
Yes, thank you. Um, I'm kind of leaning toward the same conclusion as Councilman Lipton. If we only did three projects and there were the twenty million project, I think it would be more reasonable, and that would take us according to Kurt, we're we're talking, you know, two to three years for two to three projects. And so we could come back in that three years and do the next three if the first three go well and and we get support on that. So yeah, I'm kind of being more conservative also. So thanks.
Thanks, councilmember Fahey. So I just think we need to be clear tonight on the project list, and I didn't hear councilmember Lipton saying that he was going to change the project list at this point in the conversation. So if we want to reopen that discussion, we can, if the majority of people want to revisit the project list. Uh, but I think that we gave direction on what the project list was, and councilmember Lipton was more just saying he's opposed to new revenues in general at this time, just because it's expensive and things add up. The rec tax is new on people. They have all these expenses they're incurring, and so we just don't didn't feel. What I heard you say is that just.
Uh, no, I need to correct that impression. I said a modest increase in taxes for a package of what I was expecting to be closer to twenty million might be something that I could support. Watching this tonight grow to a not just a forty million dollar package, but went to forty eight million dollar package, uh, something is this went totally the opposite direction than I was expecting.
Thank you for that clarification. That's really helpful. Do other folks want to revisit the project list at this point in the discussion? All right, Mayor Proton Maloney? You're muted. You knew.
Well, you knew before I did, unlike Councilor Dickinson. You know, I I'm concerned about this process too. I I I support the TNP. I think a number of these projects have merit. Uh, like like Councilor Lipton, I was thinking we were going to go smaller. But my concern, I've already voiced, and I started off with that, the I think we have a disordered process. Um, I think this is a rush based upon some anticipated cost and the fact that that I I I guess I wasn't clear in trying to describe what I believe something we could start sooner than later with design. We wouldn't lose a lot of time. Um, would we maybe pay another half point in interest that that is a potential, but I think it's a disordered process um in in that. So I I'm just gonna have a hard time supporting this going forward.
Thank you. So I really appreciate all the dialogue, and we do need to have a discussion. So at some point, we might need to make a motion and just vote so that it's clear what the council direction is, because part of the problem historically has been just confusion on the part of staff of which things are priority and not um, the Main Street underpass is a perfect example of that. You know, we heard um, from several people tonight that that's one of the highest priorities, and I think staff had been given a different impression in the past. I think through this discussion, one could have thought that we were going to move forward with six underpasses and evaluate how to potentially fund those if the community would pay for them, and now we're backpedaling. And so it's totally fine to change your mind. It's totally fine to have disagreement, but we do as a body need to give clear direction so the staff have something to work with. So we do actually need to nail these things down. And the next time we talk about it, even if you were on the dissenting side, we all need to be clear about what the prevailing side was. So if it, I mean, it just needs to be clear going forward. So I'm gonna work until we're gonna have to stay here until we can get clarity and not just um confusion. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, mayor. Um, yeah, I mean, I think I I I really appreciate the concerns that I just I just heard and um actually was kind of expecting to hear more of that earlier. Um, I was kind of surprised we weren't having that having that discussion on the front front end. So I think um, it's it is definitely a concern that I think we all have. Um, you know, I you know, one thought that again, that that I'm I have is if if we were to go as high as one point five from the CIP, which I understand is stretching that fund, but that would require other cuts in prioritizing this project. And if we could conceptualize that a a half a million a year could come from the general fund and that potentially a half a million a year could come from the LRC, now you're at two point five million per year, which basic math doubling one point three is almost the full forty million. So if if we worked to to use more of our existing funds and less burden on the taxpayers, then we could be going for very little from the, I think, to councilmember Lipton's idea of really asking for very little in property tax increase, if any. Um, and if we prioritize the the six tunnels and and understand that we're only going to make it to six if if prices really stay reasonable, and otherwise, we're probably only going to do five, then maybe forty million is an okay number to go for. Um, and maybe forty million can be funded with what we have, and we don't have to ask for new taxes. Um, so again, I'd just like to throw that out there that can we put more on our existing and less on tax burden, a new? I know, mayor, you're gonna correct everything you said, but um, less on a new tax burden um of of an additional sales of property tax, sorry. Um, so throwing that out there.
Thank you for putting out a compromise. So the proposal on the table to get unanimous agreement to move forward is the six tunnels, one point five from existing revenue sources, and the rest would be made up from a new property tax revenue. Did I capture that correctly, councilmember Dickinson? That was the proposal?
One point five from existing CIP and then hoping for LRC and general fund help as well as what I was throwing out there, but maybe that's not.
So mayor.
That wouldn't be in the bond language. Sorry, go ahead.
Uh, just to be clear, so this is this is the problem with talking about this stuff when we do. So the URA, I think, is around for another ten years. I think it's a twenty, it's twenty five years, so it's not uh, it's not twenty years. Um, and again, I don't know what their long term revenue projections are. I don't remember. So we are gonna have to understand what even, you know, what you five hundred thousand a year. I I I'm just not sure over the remaining ten years what the expectation is there. So I just, I'm just not sure.
Right. So the proposal that I think I heard from councilmember Dickinson is to seek other revenue sources, which Deputy Manager Davis laid out that that's something regardless of any of the path switches today, staff's going to keep working on that. Um, but to bring forward a proposal that would be one and a half million from existing revenue sources, and the rest would be made up from a property tax in the attempt to fund the six underpasses. I saw a nod from councilmember Dickinson, so I think I at least captured the proposal correctly. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, mayor, and thanks to councilmember Dickinson. I think the 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 proposal that he laid out um is is reasonable. Um, it sounds like that if, you know, uh, one point five million in the CIP budget is is a lot. Um, it's it's a lot, but but I also think that in terms of the capital projects that the community is really engaged and wants wants us to prioritize. It's these these particular projects. So I think it makes sense for us to um to to use this revenue to prioritize the projects that that the the community wants. So I think I can get behind um the councilmember Dickinson's approach to that.
Any other discussion that would be helpful to get at least four people to say they support it? I'm supportive, councilmember Dickinson. Councilmember Lay?
Yeah, I mean, I I'm supportive of that. I I think you know, I think one of the things we can be you know, the council could be criticized for here and and maybe is that we're not you know, making as hard as many hard choices as it it's all easy, you know, at some level to say more, more, more more. Um, you know, I was gonna ask whether there was any appetite for going back on the list, but I I don't think there is. I think you've asked that, and there wasn't an awful lot of energy around going back and seeing if we could pare the list down to five. Um, but I think I I like councilmember Dickinson's um suggestion. I think that's a and proposal. I I would be interested in uh Proten and councilmember Lipton's response, though.
Certainly. And as soon as they put up their hand, I will call on them. Councilmember Brown?
Sorry, I think I just still had my hand up. No worries.
All right, Mayor Proton Maloney?
Thank you for calling me out. So I'm sitting here with the budget book. And, you know, it's easy, no, with no disrespect, Councilor Dickinson, I think it's easy to come up with numbers. It's really hard to make cuts. So we're talking about, you know, maybe not funding increases for staff. We're talking about maybe cutting the library services in half. You know, this is, if we're gonna come up with those kind of cuts, that's really serious stuff. And if you look at the capital projects, um, you know, lists that we have, these are all really hard things. And so devil's in the details. Um, so I'm, until we get into the details, I'm gonna say I'm gonna pause on any opinion on this. Um, because this would this would mean in order to do this, we would have to make programmatic cuts.
Cal, Mayor Proton Maloney, um what process would you like to use to identify prioritization? Because, I mean, for example, I I wasn't suggesting changing any of the operational side with the proposal that I had put forward, but I was proposing making cuts on the capital project side. And so I think, I mean, I do agree you could do it in the approach that you've said. Well, absolutely. But so how should we have that conversation? I mean, what's the next step to having that?
Okay, so what I heard was one and a half million from CIP, which is more aggressive than has been talked about before. Half a million from LRC, which is questionable, and half a million from general fund. That's the notes that I made. If I got that wrong, I apologize. That's what I heard. But so if we're gonna take a half a million for the next twenty years out of the general fund, that to me is a programmatic cut. You don't you don't do that by cutting little things. Um, you know, that's that's five employees, for example.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yeah, I certainly wasn't recommending cutting things from the general fund, but more um not adding to the surplus as quickly as we have been.
So your expenditures are exceeding your continuing revenues? That's what I'm proposing.
We're within five hundred thousand on the general fund revenue to expense?
So you're talking about spending reserves is what you're talking for the next twenty years, taking five hundred thousand a year out of reserves. But so.
I I don't mean to be difficult. My my understanding is that we add to the reserves every year by more than five hundred thousand. So we would add to the reserves five hundred thousand less than we would otherwise be adding. So the the that reserve balance would grow more slowly if we were to dedicate money. But but I think the the final recommendation actually got rid of the the specifics on the general fund and the LRC because you you again, we had, we're not gonna have that discussion right now. We're just limiting it to one point five from the capital improvements, but not touching general fund or LRC tonight. Like, we don't have, we can't go into that discussion tonight to to promise that money. So I think the mayor adjusted my proposal from I had gotten all the way to two point five, and she brought it back to one point five, just the capital improvement uh, program one point five, but not anything about the general. So you're right, that's what I was saying, but I'm going back to the mayor's adjustment and leaving the general fund alone and not relying on LRC money, but potentially pursuing other funding sources, but nothing specific like I had mentioned a moment earlier. So um so just limiting it to the the capital improvement.
But Mayor Proton Maloney, I wasn't quarreling at all with the need to go into the type of detail that you're talking about. So my question was just like, what? What process should we use to all get on the same page about where those reductions or changes or movement would happen? I mean, that was what I was asking.
Well, my answer is it takes programmatic cuts. And we would need to say, you know, what programmatically would we cut in the general fund budget? And I know you don't want to go to the depth, but that's where it's gonna have to come from. It can't come from any other fund.
I mean, the one point five million can. And so.
Yes, I'm not I'm not quarreling. I'm talking about the million.
Okay.
It's essentially the the general fund backstops absolutely everything.
Right. So so do you think that the finance committee is a good place to run those scenarios and look at options and put forward a proposal? Do you think we should do it from the DAS? Do you think staff should work through a proposal based on what four of us have agreed on with some hesitancy from the others? I mean, what? I guess I'm just asking like next step so that we have a more informed discussion at the next meeting. That's all I have. It's not fair to put it on. It's not fair to put it all on you, but you have good ideas, so I'm trying to put it all.
Okay, um, I don't have an answer for you right now. I really don't. I I think that it's uh, you know, we've we've made this very complicated discussion, and to say that we're gonna somehow come up with another million dollars somewhere, I can only think of that coming out of the general fund, mayor. And so are we gonna eliminate you know, half of the library staff or half of the police department or or, you know, I'm I'm just being silly with my comments there, but um, that's what it's gonna take. It's gonna have be very, very difficult to come up with that if we choose that path.
So I I think the proposal that I heard and councilmember Dickinson. So I, I think the proposal that I heard, and Councilmember Dickinson, please just correct me if I'm wrong, is to do the one point five million. In existing revenue from the capital projects fund, and then to seek additional re- revenue from a property tax for the remainder of the bond.
Right.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, it, it's clear that there is a lot of, um. Apprehension about the cuts that we might need to make. So I would, I would, um. Recommend that we devote a, um, a special meeting. Um, to going through the crack capital budget, capital improvement project budget. Um, and talking about the types of cuts, um, prioritizing the cuts, because I think that before we, we go into this particular measure. Um, we probably owe it to ourselves to understand what the ramifications are for our, for our overall budget. I, I can support that, and I think that, I think that, you know, having a special time and place to talk about the specific cuts. Um, or the specific projects that we would prioritize over others, um, might be the best. So, you know, I know we've, we've talked a little bit about like. You know, what process should we use? So I'm trying to, I guess what I'm trying to do is, is suggest a process by which we would use a special meeting. Um, you know, maybe a study session that we weren't going to use between now and whenever we need to, to, um, to do the, um. To, to vote and make a final decision on this, um, so that we can understand what the, what the ramifications would be.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Lay.
Um, I, I think actually the city manager's had her hand up before I did.
City Manager Ballster? I wa- I wasn't sure if that was a new hand or a legacy hand. I tried to keep track of when they go up and down, so I apologize if I, if I missed it.
No, my, my, I don't think my hand is up.
Legacy hand. Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say if, maybe one twist to this, I mean, I'm, I'm sensitive to. The comment that the city manager said about. Moving quickly on this to define what it is that we're, we're talking about in the funding mechanism. Um, i- if we are going to look at the C I P, I guess I would also throw out. You know, the, the possibility that at least. We recognize that we're, and maybe run some of those. Run one of the projects or some of the projects against what's, what's in the C I P already. To make sure that we're comfortable. I mean, you, you may, we may look, in, in other words, we've got six. We've got six projects on the list, right? Uh, you know, if we're gonna be looking at trying to save money by cutting into the C I P. It might, I mean, do you have, wouldn't it be a good idea to be mindful that if we can cut? You know, if one of the projects that's in the C I P is more important than one of the projects that we're talking about, we have been talking about tonight. We keep our minds open.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. That's helpful. So I'll just reiterate where I think we are, and I think we might not be, um, adding any value at this point. In our discussion, and so I'm gonna try my best to see if everybody is at a place where we can live with it. Um, this evening. So the concept that we would be bringing forward here is that we've heard from the community members through the transportation master plan process. That there is a desire to have some additional infrastructure that we cannot just cash fund today. And so we're looking for ways to do that, and the proposal that we're putting forth is to use a, a mix of existing revenues. And new revenue that we would bond and be able to put the infrastructure in sooner than later. And the reason we would want to do that is because interest rates are so darn low, and these are like hundred-year improvements. And so we really would be costing the community more to be doing them at some point in the future. So we would like to ask the voters if they would like us to use a combination of existing revenue and some new revenue to pay for these improvements that they've been asking for. And if they say yes, then we could go forward and build them, and if they say no, then we would know that they did want them, but they just were not able to afford them at this time. And so tonight, the direction we will be giving to staff is to bring us more information in the future about using one point five million dollars of existing rap revenue. And bonding for a new property tax for the remainder of the revenue to fund the six underpasses that have been identified. And at a future meeting, we'll look through the budget and we'll run some scenarios about could we just pay one point five million now? Out of reserves. Um, or not putting as much into reserves future. That could be a scenario we evaluate, and we could evaluate some other scenarios of are there projects that are of lower priority? That we've put in ahead of these, because we just didn't realize we could fund them if we budgeted, uh, and bonded for it. So we'll have a little bit of scenario planning at a future study session with council to feel better about that one point five million number. Um, and then we'll move forward from there further. Was there any dispute about how I've summarized our progress this evening? Excellent. City Manager Ballster.
Um, yeah, so I probably should have said this earlier, but just so the first reading of a, of a ballot question would have to be the first meeting in, I'm sorry, the second meeting in July. So, um, so there's, I, I just, you know, we don't have a lot of time to make changes. So, um, you know, if we, we're gonna move forward with this one point five, we'll have a discussion with you. I don't, I don't know. I, I mean, we, we provided some of that information in the packet, so we, we can bring that back. I don't know how quickly, but, um. So, you know, we're gonna have to make decisions pretty quickly. I would just continue to emphasize that, um, and how much time you want staff to spend on, on this. And, you know, this, this fix of it. So just trying to understand where we are.
Thank you, City Manager Ballster and Councilmember Lipton. I saw your hand pop up. Went back down. Any other discussion on this agenda item this evening? I see, I mean, it was exhausting. I see there's some exhaustion happening on the screens. I, it's hard when we're in this format for us to all keep our energy. And be able to have the kind of debate and dialogue that we would like to, and I appreciate everybody taking the time tonight. If there are any other things that people feel like would be beneficial for the discussion, I don't want to cut them off, but if we feel like we're at a good stopping point, we can call it a night. All right. Well, thank you all so much. That is our last agenda item for the day, uh, with no other hands or discussion points. We are adjourned.